Thank you again for your patience, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call the Lake County Planning Commission meeting for May 13, 2021, two quarter. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. First thing I would like to take care of is the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission hearing on April 22nd, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Haff?
If there are no changes, I move that the Commission accepts the April 22nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
I second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Carrying's muted.
Commissioner Haff?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez? Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion still carried.
Now, moving on to citizens' input. Do we have any citizens' input at this time? Okay. I'm showing time of 9:08. We are going to go ahead and move on to item number one. It is a public hearing to consider major use permit UP 20-36. Applicant is Ghost Dance LLC. Proposed project is one type A, three outdoor, and two A type 1C specialty cottage commercial cannabis cultivation licenses consisting of 48,464 square feet of canopy area located within the 49,329 square feet of cultivation area. Location 20144 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, California, APNs 136-031-63. And also an environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration IS 2043. Applicant is Paul Alexander Patrick. Staff?
Good morning, everybody. Can everybody hear me? Okay, cool.
Yes.
Awesome. My name's Victor Fernandez. I'm an assistant planner here for the Community Development Department. So today, I'll be presenting the project that was described just here shortly. One moment. Trying to see if I can get this presentation up. Do I need to share screen? Is it already sharing?
No, you still need to share that presentation.
Oh, okay. Okay. So what's on the agenda today for this project? I'll be describing what the permit request is, the project description, site description, the analysis of the project, as well as the recommendations and the conditions. To start things off, the applicant is seeking approval for a major use permit to cultivate 48,464 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation located within 49,329 square feet of cultivation area. And of course, there'll be construction of small structures to support the cultivation operation as well. So as mentioned before above there, the total proposed canopy size, pardon, the cultivation size is 49,329 square feet, which in reflection to the parcel size would be approximately 3.6% total area to be cultivated. What I have there on the right-hand side is a zoning map. It's a little bit blurry, but it's just to kind of give you a general idea of where the project location is located in respect to the parcel, and then showing you the consistency of the zoning and the surrounding areas. So in terms of the permit, the applicant is seeking one A-type 3 license, which is a one-acre canopy size, and then two A-type 1C specialty cottage outdoor licenses, which is an additional 2,500 square feet per license. And the site is approximately 1.3 miles east from the community growth boundary. And again, on the right-hand side there, I just have a little bit clearer image of the zoning and the project location. So to start things off, staff is recommending approval of the major use permit UP 20-36 with the conditions outlined in full in the staff report. So now to discuss the site description a little bit. I did include a photo here, so to kind of jump into it right away, the property is accessed off of Jerusalem Grade Road. The area where this project is located is where the Jerusalem Grade is still county-maintained and paved. The applicant does have a private driveway right off of Jerusalem Grade Road. And the parcel size is approximately 30.75 acres and is zoned rural lands, which in reference to Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, is, does support commercial cannabis cultivation license. And then again, kind of there at the bottom, it is, the proposal is about 3.6% of total area to be cultivated in comparison to the size of the parcel. So staff did review that the project is in concurrence with the Lake County general plan. I apologize for that middle bullet point. It should say the Middletown area plan, as it is located in Middletown. And it is in compliance with the zoning ordinance as well. Staff determined that this project is consistent with those ordinances above, as well as the rural lands district upon issuance of a use permit. It would be an allowable use in that district. So here, I've provided an additional vicinity map to give kind of a clear picture. The cultivation is consistent with the land use, and where the applicant will be cultivating is going to be in approximately 0% to 10% grade. So it is relatively flat where they'll be cultivating. The applicant does propose to cultivate in, like, smart pots above ground, so they wouldn't be cultivating in ground. And again, the property is not located within a community growth boundary. So staff did conduct a site visit to ensure that the proposed project is consistent with 4290, which is the road access. Staff confirmed that the road access is adequate for the outdoor grow. There is some areas that they'll need to improve, which is proper signage when they come up to the road, ensuring that if an emergency vehicle does need to go up there, that they'll be directed appropriately to reach the site. So here, we can see kind of the southeast, looking towards southeast, towards the cultivation site. So you can see this is a very open and relatively flat area where the applicant will be cultivating. And this is looking more towards south, so it's kind of shifting the camera a little bit more right from the initial photo. And then, in terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, the major use permit submitted by Ghost Dance LLC is recommended to be categorized as a mitigative negative declaration. And staff determined that all the impacts identified in Attachment 6, which is the initial study, can be reduced to less than significant with the mitigation measures proposed with the study. And one of the analyses that staff needs to do is to identify if the project is in conformance or complies with the findings identified in Article 51, which is the major use permit article, and also in Article 27, which is the overall ordinance for commercial cannabis cultivation. Staff did determine that the proposed project complies with all the findings identified in Article 51 and Article 27, pardon, of the Lake County zoning ordinance. And just to kind of outline a little bit, with staff recommending approval, there are some mitigations in there in conditions that are in regards to air quality, geology, and soils, water quality, and cultural resources as well. If you take a look at the staff report, the mitigations for the cultural resources, wanted to clarify that, it is in reference to be identified for the culturally affiliated tribe, if you take a look at Attachment 6. So I just wanted to kind of clarify those mitigations there real quick. And then, of course, there's conditions of approval for permit expiration. And staff is recommending adoption of the mitigative negative declaration, known as IS 20-43. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and staff is ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Victor. We will bring it to the commissioners. Does anyone have any questions before we open it up for public comment?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Haff?
Just one question for Victor. What is the estimated number of employees? And I ask because that makes it easier for me to understand how many vehicle trips might be occurring. That won't change my view of the application, Victor, if you don't have it there.
Yeah, so I know that the application does propose to have employees, but at this time, a set number has not been identified.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners before I open it up for public comment? Thank you. Commissioner Haff, did you hear that?
I did not, sorry.
Page nine says 10 employees are proposed as part of the project.
Oh, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, and we're going to go ahead. The applicant is in chambers, I believe, and we will go ahead and open it up for public comment. Jake, is there anybody in the Zoom room who would like to speak on this agenda item?
We currently have no hands raised in the Zoom room. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand via Zoom. You can click on Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen. If you've called in via phone, you could dial star nine. We had one hand raised come up, one hand be raised. Should I call on that hand? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead and call on that, on the person in the Zoom room, just to make sure they state their first and last name, please.
Right, I have Philip Jones. I have given you permission to unmute, and I've asked you to unmute. All right, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, this is Philip Jones.
Thank you.
Hi, how you doing? Yaman 14117 Bottle Rock Road. You know, it said that it's no impact to the surrounding neighbors. I don't really agree with that. And I base that on a lot of time I spent in Hawaii on the Big Island. And I've found that a lot of times when there are projects like this, over time, the neighborhood changed. Yeah, just, I don't agree with that statement, I guess. I think it's, I have nothing against the people doing it per se, but I think it's incorrect to say there's no impact on the neighbors, whether it's studies that are environmental or biological or whatever, just on an interpersonal relationship. I think Lake County has challenged, has had challenges with addiction and things of that nature, and whether it's alcohol or other types of recreational drugs or illegal drugs. I think that you have to be a little careful how you bring things into neighborhoods that are basically, I don't know, homogeneous in the sense of having a way of living and a way of thinking and that aren't in alignment with that.
Oh, are you, does that conclude your comment?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Jake, is there anybody else in the Zoom room who would like to speak, or anybody in chambers who would like to speak on behalf of this agenda item?
I do currently have two more hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you, Jake.
All right. The next hand we have is Raoul Goff. Raoul, I've sent you a, all right, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, it's Raoul Goff.
Great, thank you.
I'm also a neighbor here on Bottle Rock Road, and...
I don't mean to interrupt you, but this item, this agenda item is not located on Bottle Rock. We're on item one for Jerusalem Grade Road.
Oops. So that's coming, that's coming up later, then? Okay.
Correct. I believe that's later on. I believe it's item four, three, three? Item number three. So I apologize, I just have to keep it on this agenda.
No, no, totally, it wasn't clear which one we were in. Thank you.
Jake, if there's still another hand in regards to this agenda item, we can check on that, please.
Yes, I have, I have a hand up again from Philip Jones. Should I continue with that?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
As long as it's in regards to the agenda item that we're on right now.
Okay, Philip Jones, I've sent you permission to speak and asked you to unmute again.
Okay, I apologize. My comment was also related to the project on Bottle Rock Road.
Not a problem. I kind of figured that out towards the end, but I wanted you to get at what you were saying. I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. I'll reserve it till the proper time. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else in the Zoom room, Jake, with no hands raised, I think we can bring it back to the commissioners.
Correct, we have no more hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners. Anything else that you guys would like to ask, any questions for staff or the applicant?
I have no questions.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, I don't have any questions either.
Is the applicant interested in saying something for the record?
I don't believe so.
Well, in that case, I'm prepared to offer a motion.
Commissioner Haff?
Thank you. I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-36 applied for by Ghost Dance LLC on property located at 20144 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, further described as APN 136-031-63, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 26, 2021.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haff?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion still carried.
Madam Chair?
Please.
I further move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-36, applied for by Ghost Dance LLC on property located at 20144 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, further described as APN 136-031-63, does meet requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, Subsections II, III, I, II, III of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 26, 2021.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haff?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion still carried.
Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. That concludes item number one. Thank you. Moving to item number two, this is a public hearing to consider major use permit UP 19-49. Applicant is Lake County Investment Group LLC, Leighton Martinez. Owner Roger Wheeler Trust, proposed. Project is, okay, I apologize. Applicant is applying for a total of five acres of canopy area within approximately less than a total of 20 cultivation area between two parcel project locations. Location 1,001,270 State Highway 53, Clear Lake, California, APN 010-055-26 and 010-055-27. We're also considering environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration IS 19-71. Staff?
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm actually, I have a presentation available. I can't see the screen.
Okay, I'll try the lights for you. Does that help? Thank you. Is that better?
I don't have my glasses on.
Okay.
Here, sorry, no problem. I can pull it up. I have the, the drive open, the thumb drive open here. I see a folder.
Yep.
Is the presentation, I see a PDF here, is it the, or is it a...
It's in a folder.
Folder, okay. Okay, I see four PowerPoints here. Which one is it?
It's for Highway 53.
Highway 53, all right.
Thank you for your help, Jake.
So I will start this here.
If it helps, you could sit maybe on the other chair and just tell him to click the next slide whenever you're ready to continue.
She can use the mouse there on the desktop or the desk to transition to the next slide. It's ready when you are.
Okay. So today, we're going to go over Leighton Martinez, the project applicant. And I'll go down the topics and findings for UP, I guess, 19-49. So the applicant is requesting an approval for a total of 213, 939 square feet of total canopy area to be located between two site location. That would be, that would total up to 14.59 acres of cultivation area. The cultivation method will be outdoor with full sunlight without the use of artificial light. The details of the individual cultivation area is shown in bulleted in this section and as well as the table in the staff report. The project setting is within the zoning designation rural residential. The surrounding area is primarily rural land and rural residential zoning designation. The surrounding parcel ranges from approximately 27 acres to 107 acres in size. The project is adjacent to the scenic state highway 53. However, the project is accessed, and the project is accessed through Junction Plaza north of the project area and made down to Oglin Canyon. What? Okay, so a site visit was conducted February 2020 and was accompanied by code enforcement for 4290 compliance. This was for the northern parcel. And these are the existing structures. Staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the general amendment following listed and determined that it is consistent with the Lake County general plan, lower lake area plan, and zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing commercial cannabis cultivation, which applies for crop production with the Lake County general plan for residential, rural residential. The applicant is proposing a five, A-type 3 outdoor cultivation per 20 acres minimum lot size and a total of 105 acre parcel. This will allow up to five acres of canopy area within, yeah, 14.59 acres of cultivation area. The cultivation method will allow the filtration of water and groundwater recharge during precipitation, and it complies with the general plan. The project complies with the shoreline community area plan. Per zoning ordinance, Article 27, it is required that all applicant installs water meter to monitor water usage and provide an estimated water calculation. This requirement will allow the cultivator to monitor their water usage and ensure that they do not exceed the allotment and/or allow them to ensure that the cultivation is using cultivation techniques as necessary. The project management plan also includes proposed irrigation measures and listed lists how the project will implement conservation techniques while preserving water quality through the project management plan for potential sediment runoff during earth movement. The applicant is proposing native vegetation screening along the state highway due to the zoning combining district and being approximately 500 feet from an active ag use across the highway per amended local ordinance 3103. The applicant also provide a biological assessment report, which did not indicate the presence of protected species. In response to the following zoning designation for the project location, the cultivation of the cannabis is permitted for rural residential upon the issuance of the use permit according to Section 27.13, Table B. Under Article 34, the applicant will protect, protect the scenic area from the scenic highway by providing native tree screening along Highway 53 and will be sourced from a local business. The waterway combining designation limits the setback requirement for the proposed development. However, Article 27 further limit and increase the setback from all water courses to protect and preserve significant riparian systems, streams, water quality, and runoffs. The applicant meets Article 27, which includes the following development standards, general requirement, and restriction that I have listed in the staff report. The initial study found that the project could cause potentially significant impact that can be found in Attachment 6 and will, five, and will include aesthetics such as additional light sources for structures and security, and that the project is located in a scenic corridor. The, they will provide mitigation measures for, by screening the scenic highway. The applicant will provide an outdoor lighting plan and blackout film material plans to CDD for review and approval for the proposed structures. Security light will be mitigated to be shielded to not exceed to other parcels. Air quality addresses impact for the, from the plungent odor of the plant and dust fugitives that will be mitigated through passive means, through buffer zone, and active means through odor control plan and biological resources that addresses sensitive species and how sensitive species will be protected during operations. The project meets all of the use permits listed in the staff report and complies with the development standard and requirements in Article 27, and it is also listed in the staff report. Staff recommends that the planning commission take the following action to adopt the mitigated negative declaration IS 19-71 for major use permit. UP 19-49 with the following findings found in Attachment 5. Staff also recommends the approval of major use permit UP 1949 for the following findings on the previous slide and listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for either staff? Is the applicant present? Good morning. And we, we also do have the applicant in the chambers. If you guys are, have any questions before we open it up for public comment?
No questions at this time.
I, I just had one question. I don't see the water, what it said that there could be some hydrology issues. And it says that there's plenty of tanks. I just, I've been searching, I couldn't get online to see how many gallons is the well they're using? Or does the applicant know?
Good morning, Richard Knoll.
Just, just a moment, I have to make sure your mic's on. Sam? Go ahead, you can start again.
Richard Knoll representing Lake County Investments LLC. There are, I believe, three wells on the property. I do not recall the gallons per minute. They are well-producing significant well water, but I will search in my records. The applicant may also be online. I believe he may have an answer, but I will look for that and, and get you that, that information. The existing wells and existing concrete cisterns in place. And there are additional water storage tanks being proposed as, as well, so. But let me see if I can get that, that gallons per minute calculation.
Okay, excellent. You can do that well. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Jake, is there anybody in the Zoom room who would like to speak on behalf or have any questions for this agenda item?
Yes, we do have a couple hands up here. The first hand I have up was from Leighton Martinez. Yes, it looks like you're immediate, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, Leighton Martinez. To answer the question about the gallons per minute, there's, there are three wells, two we actually use currently. I believe there's 60 and 80 gallons a minute. At one point in time, a well company came out and said that one of the wells was well above 100 gallons a minute. I think it's limited by kind of the pump we have in there. But they're two really well-producing wells. And then the only other thing I wanted to say was, it didn't come up in the PowerPoint presentation, but all of our cannabis is grown above ground. We haven't done any grading there. We're gonna continue to do that style of growing, so we won't change the landscape. And I think it's important probably for the neighbors out there and for me because I don't want to change how the property looks. But those are the only two comments I have.
Thank you. Jake, is there any other, you said there was another hand raised?
Yes, we have one more hand up currently, uh, from Bobby Dutcher. Bobby has sent you a new request. Alright, it looks like you're immediate, please confirm your first and last name.
Bobby Dutcher in Kelseyville. I've sold this property, although I think this is the second or third time. So the, the previous owner, when he developed the property, he did a lot of the road work and he had the wells drilled. So Dan McMullin was the contractor that drilled them. And when he did that, he tested one of the wells at over 100 gallons per minute, but he was using an airlift system to do it. And that was about all the air that he could blast into the hole. So he thought it was more than 100 gallons a minute, but that was all that he could really, you know, push out of it. The other well, he didn't do a well log on it and we've never been able to get one for it. But he said it tested the same, I'm not sure why he didn't record a well log. But the two wells that they're, they're currently using at that time were both capable of over 100 gallons. They both had excellent water quality, so this project is located on an excellent aquifer. I should have, you know, way more than enough water for this purpose. The one of the well logs is recorded at the Environmental Health. I believe Richard may have that, if not, I've, I've got a copy of it.
Okay. Jake, is there any other hands that are raised currently?
Currently, we have no more hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. I would like to offer.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We did have a, right as I said, we did have a hand raise.
Okay.
This was from Leighton Martinez again.
Hi, Leighton Martinez again. Just real quick, a comment about what Bobby said. We did get the second well log completed this year by J&amp;J pumps. And that was the one that came out at 60 gallons a minute. So there, there are the two certified wells. They're, they're both, they definitely both have well logs now. That was it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do believe that there's someone in chambers that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and let him do that. Please just state your name again, please.
Yes, my name is Richard Knoll. And I am a planning consultant from Lakeport, 825 South Main Street in Lakeport. I actually have a PowerPoint presentation, if we could load that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, did you load the thumb drive?
Yeah. Yeah, Jake, I'm.
We're working on it right now.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So I do want to thank the planning commission and staff for their consideration of this use permit and all of the time and effort that goes into processing these applications. And certainly for your time this morning. Yes. So since I don't have control, I'm just gonna. Okay. So this is called the Highway 53 cultivation project. It's north of the city of Clear Lake on Highway 53, thank you. And maybe if we could get the slides, sorry. This is just a brief summary of the proposed project. And it does involve five acres of cannabis canopy and roughly 14 acres of, of cultivation area. A portion of the site was actually early activated last year and there was a successful cultivation. We've submitted the use permit application, all the site plans and technical reports and, including the well logs. I apologize for not having all that stuff available this morning. But this is actually a diagram of the property. There are two parcels. There is the northern parcel. This was the area that was early activated last year. And then there is a proposed new area to be cultivated as part of the application. And it's, this is the area that is somewhat exposed to Highway 53. And we have submitted a scenic corridor mitigation plan that is both, you know, a mapping and, and also a, a written out mitigation plan, the two parcels. And you can see, you know, this area is much more isolated from, from Highway 53. Access to the site is from Junction Plaza. There's an intersection with 53 up here. And then it, somewhere in here, it turns into Auglin Canyon Road. But there's a driveway that serves the site right in here. A good system of onsite access roads to both the northern parcel and to this southern parcel. It's a really, you know, even though it's a rural site, it's been developed in the past and, and has good infrastructure, if you will. Again, just more summary information about the, about the project. This is reference to scenic combining district. We did do biological resources reports. It's an outdoor cultivation project using smart pots. It's a, by the way, the, the early activation really well done. I mean, people who have, have seen the project have all complimented on, on how well the, the project has been developed and operated. And this is the written out portion, the, the scenic corridor plan. 65 15 gallon oak trees. The trees will be maintained and replaced if they do not survive. In addition, we will also propose solid wood fencing be installed along the highway and along the southern property line if need be. The way that this property lays out, the fencing probably would not do a whole lot in terms of visual screening. But if that is something that the county wants to see, we'll, we'll do that. And the, the idea is to provide a scenic corridor planting plan that mimics a, a natural layout or, or growing pattern for native oaks. And, and so over time, it will take a little time to screen the property, but we think, you know, over time, it will be very effective. So these are findings just reiterated, you know, from the county staff report that the project is in conformance with the zoning ordinance criteria. And just again reiterating the staff recommendations. And we thank the planning commission for your consideration.
And thank you for, for providing that for us as well.
Thank you.
In addition to that staff report. One, thank you. I was gonna say, Alexa, can you turn on the light? Okay, so thank you for that. We're gonna go ahead and Jake, is there any other hands raised right now that would like to comment before I bring it back to the commission?
At this moment, we have no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you. Anybody in chambers that would like to speak in regards to this agenda item? Okay. We're going to bring it back to the commissioners. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Chavez?
No questions, but I do have a statement I'd like to give.
Absolutely.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Everardo Chavez, planning commissioner for District 2. I was invited by Mr. Martinez to visit his site. I went on May 1st, around 10:00 in the morning, met up with Mr. Martinez and I mean, the entrance to the property, it's clean. It's a, it's not a, how do you say, the road is not like a bad, a terrible road. It's drivable. And once you get to the actual site, it's a, there's gravel. So it's very clean, very well-kept property. Mr. Martinez did tell me that he does plan on using oak trees to plant around the perimeter of the property. And from some of these pictures that you could see on the report, I'm not sure if anybody could see it, but they are above ground. And there are oak trees in between the grow, so he didn't like cut down trees to make room for, for plants, which is, you know, I was, a lot of people would appreciate that, keeping it as, as undisturbed as possible. And the whole thing about having above-ground pots, I think, just keeps the whole environment and everything as intact as, as it can be. Keeping it, keeping the nature there. I believe that's it. Thank you so much for the opportunity to check out your site, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you.
I guess I had just one question for Nicole or Scott. Just as long as, I mean, I feel that it sounds like this one has over seven gallons per minute, so I feel good with that. But I guess the question is, what has been passed in terms of Highway 53? And how far we have to be away from the roads? And do they have to be screened? What eventually got passed? And so obviously, I've seen this one from the highway. There's gonna be a new proposed area there. Does it have to be screened from Highway 20 and 53? And is there a certain distance? I, I don't remember, but I want to make sure anything that we do pass does conform to the new, whether it was an amendment or a law.
Are you, Commissioner, are you requesting clarification from staff on what your ordinance?
Yes.
Requirements?
So I don't know if that would come to you or to Scott, but again, what is the current?
That would be a question for staff as far as which parts of the ordinance apply here to this specific project and what sorts of setbacks would be required.
Would you like to say something? Go ahead.
I don't have the, the ordinance with me.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams, we'll need to look into that for you. It, this project's been in the system and been processed and been being processed well before the, the adoption of that most recent, that most recent ordinance. So we'll need to look into that. I don't have the answer for you right at the moment.
Okay. Do we just need a quick five-minute break then to just look that up?
We can, we can, if you'd like to do that, yes.
Yeah, I think it, it should be relatively, I mean, easy, so I just can't get onto the internet right now.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Haff?
Once that information is found, if it does in fact affect this application because of what the commission and the board recently passed, that could simply be added as a condition of approval.
Correct, I, I agree. So did we want to take a quick five-minute break? Or I'm sure staff is probably already working on it as they're listening to us. So we will take a quick break and as soon as we have the information to move forward, we will be back.
Madam Chair?
Nicole?
How, how long of a, how long of a break?
Let's do five minutes. Or sooner. I just wanted to let everybody know, our break is going to be just a little bit longer. I would like to resume, let's see, maybe. Staff is working diligently on it as we speak, so maybe another five minutes or so? 10 minutes is great. We're gonna give ourselves 10 minutes, so hang in there. Thank you. We are going to go ahead and resume our meeting. I appreciate everyone's patience while we figured that out. We are going to bring it over to staff to clarify what we were discussing. So before I bring it back to you, to staff, I would like, did you want to restate your question so that the clarification is a little bit more fresh in our minds? Commissioner Williams?
Yes, my question was for staff to see if this project on Highway 53, I had noticed that there was some, we had passed something and I did not know if it had been passed at the Board of Supervisor about either screening or feet from Highway 53. And so we were trying to, you know, assess whether it had to be a certain amount of feet or if there had to be any type of screening.
And in regards to. And in regards to this, this project, staff has a, they've actually identified that. So would you elaborate on that for us, please?
Okay, so it was proposed.
Okay, so it was proposed, but it was not implemented for, in our ordinance 3103. But vegetative screening is part of the condition of approval because it impacts the aesthetics aspect of it because of the scenic corridor on State Highway. So vegetative screening is actually part of the condition and it is required.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the, the clarification. Commissioner Hess, do you have any questions or comments at all?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from the commissioners? No? Okay, well, public comment is closed. We have no further discussion on this item if anyone is prepared to make a motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the planning commission find the major use permit UP 19-49, applied for by Lake County Investment Group LLC, Leighton Martinez on property located at 1,000 and 1,270 State Highway 53, Clear Lake, California, further described as APNs 010-055-27 and 010-055-26 will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 13th, 2021.
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I further move that the planning commission find the major use permit UP 19-49, applied for by Lake County Investment Group LLC, Leighton Martinez on property located at 1,000 and 1,270 State Highway 53, Clear Lake, California, further described as APNs 010-055-27 and 010-055-26 does not, does meet the requirement of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1 at I sub II of the Lake County zoning ordinance. And the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 13th, 2021.
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. We?
I, I will be recusing myself for this next item.
Okay. Item, agenda item number three, scheduled for 9:15 AM, is a public hearing to consider major use permit UP 20-37. The applicant is Charlene Wignal and Francis Wignal, owner, trustee. Proposed project is, the applicant is applying for three acres of outdoor canopy area within a 230,000 square feet cultivation area in two site locations within an existing campground facility. Location is 13095 and 13130 Bottle Rock Road, Cobb, California, APNs 011-039-37 and 011-039-38. We will also be discussing a mitigated negative declaration IS 20-46. Staff?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, I believe when there are just three commissioners present and voting, the vote has to be unanimous.
And Nicole, my counsel, can you clarify that?
You are correct, Commissioner. When there, when there is a bare quorum, the vote to pass must be all three of you.
Thank you for the clarification and thank you, Commissioner Hess.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I have a presentation.
You, you have a presentation that Jake needs to pull up?
Yes. Thank you.
Jake, are you able to pull up her staff, her staff report? Or her presentation?
Yeah, all right. So is that thumb drive still plugged into the computer there? Or is this one on the shared drive? I'm sorry.
No, it's, I just plugged it in.
Okay. All right.
We are on Bottle Rock, please.
Okay. Herbal medicine?
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
One second, sorry. All right, there you go.
Hi, so we're gonna go over Bottle Rock Herbal Medicine. The owner is Charlene Wignal, major use permit UP 20-37. And we're gonna go over the following agenda. Project description. The applicant is requesting an approval for a total of 130,000 square feet of a total, of total canopy area and located on two site, which is A and B in the site map. And that would total up to 230,000 square feet of cultivation area. The cultivation method will be outdoor with full sunlight and without the use of artificial light. The details are of the individual cultivation areas shown in bulleted in this section and in the staff report. The project setting is within the zoning designation of rural lands. The surrounding area is primary, primarily rural, rural lands. The surrounding parcel ranges approximately two acres to 120 acres in size. The project is adjacent to a scenic road, Bottle Rock Road. The cultivation site is located within a relatively flat area that's been previously disturbed. The, the following slide will be site pictures, site visit pictures. Site visit was conducted on April 4th, 2020 and was accompanied by code enforcement for 4290. Site visit, that was cultivation B facing. And these are existing structures. This is, this is the proposed and existing restroom area with AD/AD compliance. Okay, so the staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the Lake County general plan, Cobb Mountain area, area plan and zoning ordinance and found it to be consistent to the above. Oops. What was that? The applicant is proposing commercial cannabis cultivation, which applies to crop production with the Lake County general plan for rural lands. The project proposes three acres of cannabis canopy area, which would require a total of 60 acres for the permitted use on the existing commercial campground facility. The operation would include planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading, trimming and/or combination of the, those activities, including processing. The project conforms with the general plan for land use as general umet agricultural use. The project addresses the Cobb Mountain area plan objectives. The proposed project consists of using an existing wall that produces approximately 5.5 gallon per minute and water diversion from Kelsey Creek through historic water rights from the State Water Resource Control Board. The maximum eligible diversion season is November 1st to March 31st and a maximum diversion rate is 10 gallons per minute. Water source will be monitored and recorded. These requirements will be reinforced and added as a conditions of approval for compliance. The proposed project will take place within an existing structure that was used as a commercial campground facility. The then just undisturbed area was surveyed in 1982 for cultural resources by the same owner and resulted in findings of archaeological resources that were properly identified and, and reported. The applicant also provided an update archaeological report and resulted in the same findings from the original survey. The proposed project is not predicted to create an impact to cultural resources as a condition of approval attachment for. The applicant shall comply with California Department of Forest and Fire Protection for emergency ingress and egress. As a, as the project proposal, the applicant will need to comply with current fire standards as they are using existing structure as part of the cultivation operation proposal. As a condition of approval, all existing structure will need to meet current commercial standards. In response to the zoning designation for rural land, special lot size, scenic combining and waterway combining, the cultivation of commercial cannabis is permitted for rural land zoning district upon issuance of a use permit according to Section 27.13 Table B of the Lake County zoning ordinance. Article 30 doesn't apply and it reflects to this special lot size for land use alteration and the scenic combining district protects and enhances views of scenic area. Although the project is located within this district, the project is located outside this scenic, umet scenic view shed and is naturally screened by dense native trees. The waterway combining district preserve, protect and restore significant waterway to protect water quality. The project is located 100 feet away from all waterways. The proper best management plan will be implemented for sediment and erosion control. Article 27 also includes development standards, general requirements and restriction listed in the staff report. The initial study found that the project could cause potentially a significant impact that can be found in attachment five and will include aesthetics such as additional light source for structures and security and that the project is located in, well, not the project, the project parcel is located in the scenic corridor. The applicant will provide outdoor lighting plan, blackout filmed material plans to CDD for review and approval for the proposed structure. Security light will be mitigated to be shielded to not exceed to other parcels. There's existing vegetation, vegetative screening a lot that are already in place along the corridor. Air quali, air quality addresses the impact from the pungent odor of the plant and thus fugitive that will be mitigated through passive mean and through buffer zone and active mean through odor control plan. Biological resources to address sensitive species and how sensitive species will be protected during the operation and that can be found in the attachment five of the initial study. The project meets all of the major use permit findings listed in the staff report and complies with all of the development standards and requirement in Article 27. Staff recommends that the planning commission take the following action to adopt the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-46 for major use permit UP 20-37 with the following findings found in attachment five. Staff also recommends the approval of the major use permit UP 20-37 for the following findings on the, on the previous slide and listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from Commissioner Hess or Commissioner Chavez before we open it for a public comment? No?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hess.
Thank you. So Sator, it sounds like this is well-screened from a public view, either by, by a vehicle or other parts of the area? The reason I ask is because there's a reference made to eight cargo shipping containers that will be used for storage and processing during the harvest. I'm not a big fan of cargo shipping containers on agricultural land and typically we ask that they be modified in some way so that they are more attractive or they don't stand out in a natural environment. But if these, if this entire area is well-screened from public view, I can live with that.
Would, would you say that it's?
It is, it's heavily dense. When I went on a site visit, I actually don't see any of the cultivation area from the road.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Before I open it up to public comment, is there, is the applicant here or someone who wants to speak on behalf of the applicant or the project? Please just be sure to state your first and last name. We will go through this and then we will open it up for public comment after your presentation.
The applicant also prepared a presentation PowerPoint.
Okay, and do we have access to the presentation?
I just plugged it in.
Okay. Jake, they put the thumb drive in, I believe.
Madam Chair, my name is Richard Noel.
Oh, I, I meant Jake, who's actually, he's going to be running the computer for you.
Right. It is the Bottle Rock.
Excellent.
There we go.
Thank you so much.
So I, this is Richard Noel, again, planning consultant from Lakeport and I am here with Jolene and Charlene Wignal, the property owners and applicant. And I do wanna just make a correction. The applicant is actually Bottle Rock Herbal Medicine. The owner is a trust and the applicant is Jolene Wignal. So what we're going to do is just quickly go through this presentation, location of the project. The, the project is essentially a three-acre cannabis cultivation project, a little larger cultivation area. No new buildings are proposed. Cultivation would occur in full sun in raised planter beds and there is an extensive existing irrigation system in place that uses both well water and adjudicated water from Kelsey Creek that has been a longstanding operation. There is a, a large surface water facility, a pond where water is stored and then used during the, the growing season. This is a, an air photo and a description of existing uses. Unfortunately, this little, John is blocking the, the full site. If, if you were to look at this, the pond is actually right over here, right about on John's shoulder there. And, but this is, this site actually is the location of the Camp Indian Meadows summer camp that existed here for a number of years. These buildings, there's some cabins.
Oh, cool.
Back over here, there's the pond. These are some basketball courts, there's restrooms, there's a, you know, cafeteria, cooking facilities. You know, unless you know it's there, it's a very well obscured site. It's obscured by both vegetation and by topography and And this is one of the growing areas and this is the other. These are very level, lays out really well. In my experience, one of the better sites that I've seen for this type of activity. It's served by Bottle Rock Road via a driveway. There's a, a bridge that has been engineered to determine capacity, 75,000 pounds. We do have a letter from an engineer that documents that. The site was actually early activated last year and, and had a successful season. However, that, that grow was, was removed. There's actually going to be a new tenant this year, but the same method is being proposed, you know, under this use permit. This is the site plan, the two areas, these are the, the cabins and the basketball courts. This is where those storage containers will, will be placed. This is the pond, again, the grow areas. This is the driveway coming in from Bottle Rock Road. That's where the bridge is located. So you can see that it's a, you know, there's actually adjacent land in between Bottle Rock and, and the site. And this was the early activation from last year. These are some findings that came out of the Sequo initial study. And this is the staff recommendation. And we just feel that we satisfy the zoning ordinance criteria with respect to this type of use. There are considerable findings in our presentation to the planning commission that document the project's conformance with the zoning ordinance. And we respectfully request that the planning commission approve the use permit. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we get the lights on, please? Thank you. Commissioner Hess, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant before I open it up for public comment?
Out at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Are you, would you like to speak or did you want to wait till public comment? Okay. Jake, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in chambers who would like to speak in regards to this agenda item? So I do have somebody in chambers, Jake, that, Jake, that would like to speak. So I will let you know when we can get the Zoom room going. You're welcome to approach the, the podium and just be sure to state your first and last name and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Chris Manke.
Could we just be just a little bit louder for me? Or you can, or you can pull up the microphone or you can do that too.
My name is Chris Manke and I live just off of Glenbrook Road on and about a mile past this site. And I do want to say that Glenbrook Road parallels this project, but across the creek, across Kelsey Creek. And so it is visible from Glenbrook Road. And in the past, this past year, the operation had there was very visible, the containers especially. And at night, the lights and activity and stuff around them. So if the containers are going to be put in that same location, they definitely will be visible. The other aspect was the problem of, as you know, when other grows and so forth, they have problems with, whether it's theft, trying to get in and, you know, whatever, all the problems that go with the normal grow. And we did have problems with people coming in on Glenbrook Road, trying to access the site. And that's something that I didn't see addressed in, in this issue here. It was like nothing existed on that side of the creek. But that is, is a very big concern of ours. And another one naturally is right now water because it is a drought year. And the creek's the lowest, it probably has ever been, just about and it will be. And the question also is that I didn't catch the dates on that, but they could draw water from Kelsey Creek. But my understanding is they can't really draw it during growing season. Is that?
Can I answer?
Yes, please.
For cannabis, you can't. Our property has two rights. My mother has an original 62 right, which is water for our lawns and our trees.
Enter the, enter the microphone.
Cannabis, cannabis has a forbearance time. You cannot draw from April 1st through November.
If I may?
Right.
October 30th.
Okay, one moment, one moment. Go ahead, Nicole.
So this is not a conversation back and forth period if, if there are questions?
So he has his public comment and then I'll give you a chance to respond.
I thought he was asking a question.
Well, if, just to be, just to be clear. So just, just to be clear, comment period is for comments and questions that the public has. If the commission wishes to have clarification.
No, I would like to just have public comment and then I'll give you a chance to respond. Thank you.
Well, I meant.
So that?
Madam Chair.
I mean, like not like.
Right, exactly. So you, you may take notes and if you, if, if the commission wishes to have a clarification, any commissioner wishes to have a particular question answered, they could certainly ask staff or ask the applicant for information, but this is not a conversation back and forth.
Thank you so much.
But those are questions I have about the location of the containers, all right? And, and kind of activity that will be going on there, even if the lights are shielded and so forth, you could still see what's going on. So that's where we would also prefer a security fence of some sort on their side of the creek. It would limit access to the creek and also buffer the, the visibility angle of it, you know? And I think that's a minimum thing. But my concern is how is it addressed and maybe it never was about the access off of Glenbrook Road, which would be by foot, I mean, that's across the creek and so forth. But that's nothing for somebody that wants to, to slip in there is my concern here. Because it does mention security fences, but it didn't, I didn't see where they were very specific.
Okay.
And my other concern was that this whole procedure caught us off guard. And heck, you know, we're adjacent landers. We don't actually, you know, we're, no, I could say another mile in, but we did definitely get odors from the last operation. We have here the operation, when we had the equipment in there, you'd hear all the backup alarms and so forth, even though it does say that they must keep them to a minimum. So we certainly.
So we've reached our three minute limit. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you, Karen.
I'm done.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to make a comment? Jake, is there anyone in the Zoom room with their hand raised by any chance?
Yes, we have some hands raised in the Zoom room. Currently, we have five hands raised here. The first hand I have raised looks like it's from Michael Solit. All right, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Michael Solit. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to, to speak today. I would like to address several issues as quickly as possible. One, I am a property owner that actually shares three quarters of a mile of property along, along the creek across directly from Camp Indian Meadows. There are several issues. First one I want to address is water. A couple of years ago, I, I was very interested in, in buying this property. So I did a tremendous amount of research. First of all, there, the well issue, there is, there was a well for a proposed home put in years ago for five gallons a minute. That well was never completed as far as I know. The second thing in your documentation was there's a new proposed well, but there's no, there's no determination what that is. The third one is that the creek water, this is the third year we've had very little, this is the second year we've had very little water and the creek is extraordinarily low. And there is absolutely no way that that water from the creek should be used. The water is taken from the creek at, at a massive, at a massive rate and pumped up into that pond. That pond has no access of its own. So the water is taken from the creek, put into the pond and then being used for irrigation. The second part is that my property is on that. And last year, multiple times, there were cars parked along the road with complete unobstructed access. The containers, the buildings, the noise, there are 14 cabins that were used for all of the people that were working there. They, they made, there was lights, there was noise, there's a complete, complete obstruction and, and, and of, of privacy. The second thing is if they're going to do, they put the containers within 60 feet of the creek on a concrete pad, which was the basketball courts were completely visible. The second thing is if they're going to do this, they have to put a fence completely along the whole Glenbrook Road. Because during the fall and, and winter, there is absolutely zero obstruction. And there is no, there is no person allowed to park on my property on Glenbrook Road. There is no security. We, we wrote, there's 16 property owners that are adjacent to this and we wrote a letter in March, which was not responded to. There are multiple issues. There's a campground, a family campground adjacent to this property. This was for kids camp. This is not for, you know, acres of marijuana and, and having complete access by the entire county and area of people just coming in. This is not, this is not.
I'm sorry, we're at our three minute. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you. Jake, is there another hand raised you mentioned?
Yes, we have another hand raised from Dan. Dan, I've sent you an unmute request. All right, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go on to the next hand here. I'll check back in with Dan in a moment. I have Philip Jones next on the list.
Yes.
Yes, with you, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I, I actually disagree with the statement that there's no impact to the surrounding.
Can you please say your first and last name for me?
Yeah, Philip Jones.
Thank you.
On Bottle Rock Road. Yeah, I disagree with the statement, there's no impact to the surrounding neighborhood, neighbors. And this is nothing, you know, related to the owners. But it's, I spent 14 years on the big island of Hawaii. There's an area there called Puna, a district where the whole character of that area changed primarily, or one of the reasons was because of operations like this that come in and really do change a neighborhood or they can't change a neighborhood. It attracts kind of different kinds of people. There's a different flavor to, you know, what's going on. Some people come in, some people move out. But the general, what generally happened down there, in my opinion, was a decrease in value and in values. So I just wanted to put that in. I think this, and again, you know, in terms of Lake County, I mean, alcohol, drugs, they're legal, that's, that's fine. But they raise issues when they're so blatant out in the open and they can attract over time, people who kind of disrupt again, the neighbors that have been there for a long time. I also know that the smells, the odors, the noise is a factor. And I just think that, I'm a psychotherapist, I've worked with young people with addiction problems and, and also social psychology, neighborhood. I think there are issues that probably weren't addressed with the statistics here, which I respect science. I appreciate statistics and the studies that have been done. But I wonder if any studies have been done about neighborhoods where this type of an operation would come in, which would definitely have an impact on the flavor of the neighborhood and its values. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand in the room, in the Zoom room, Jake?
All right, the next hand we have up is from Raoul Goff. All right, looks like you're muted.
Yeah, good morning, this is Raoul Goff.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, so I'm also an adjacent neighbor and have been in the community for about five years now. And I, I saw on the use permit that the zoning was rural. But my understanding is that the, the current zoning on Camp Indian Meadows is for a kids camp. And certainly when we moved to the neighbors, I, neighborhood, I also operate the previous known Yogi Bear campground, which is now Mundala Springs, which is a family campground. And as our neighbor Chris Menke and Michael Solit said, the road, Glenbrook Road, which runs through our property and that, you know, number of families, you know, walk down and a number of our neighbors, all of whom are, that I've spoken to and who signed the letter that Michael referred to, are, are against this grow being in the neighborhood primarily because we think it's going to change the composition of the neighborhood. We, we, we know from what we saw last year, and this is an expanded version of that, that there's going to be a lot of people on site. And even the owners themselves do not live on site. It sounds like they're renting their property to another company that's coming in and doing this grow that has no, you know, and has exhibited no care for the local community. We as neighbors have not been spoken to directly. We don't know who this organization is that's coming and renting the Wignalls property. And, you know, we're, we're concerned that with families and kids and especially lots of families from, you know, the, the area, that they're not going to feel that this is a safe place to come anymore. The security issue that, that Mr. Solit and Menke mentioned is a real issue because it's very easy to walk to this grow site from Glenbrook Road, it's a few yards. So, you know, we have questions about what kind of people, what kind of security, the zoning, the Glenbrook Road view shed, which is another view shed, it's not just on Bottle Rock. And, you know, how this is going to affect the neighborhood.
We're sorry, we are out of time. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
All right, the next hand I have up is from Michael Madden.
Hello, this is Michael Madden, can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
Great, thank you. I will just reiterate what other neighbors said, a recent owner of, of a property that is adjacent. I just, to sort of put an exclamation point on a couple of things. It's a little bit misleading when you talk about the access or vantage point of Bottle Rock Road because while it, it's true that maybe the grow area can't be seen from the addresses road. This Glenbrook Road that everyone is speaking of is a sweet country property shared by many families. People that keep it, keep it maintained, share information with each other, are community oriented, collaborative. And it was, it was just jarring to, to have that community country road be impacted in this way by a commercial enterprise that really had intentions that didn't feel, that were in the spirit of the community. And again, the safety concerns had a number of people feel that, you know, it wasn't even safe to go have a community conversation about it. And, and so we strongly object and we appreciate the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jake, is there any other hands in the Zoom room?
We have one more hand raised and it's from. Uh, we have one more hand raised and it's from, uh, Michael Solit, who I think I, was the first comment.
I think we need to not let him speak, my attorney needs to speak.
Thank you.
Yes. Rebecca Rose. Yeah, my attorney, please. That's.
Is your, okay.
I do have, uh, Rebecca Rose in the Zoom room here, I have given them permission to speak.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, I, I don't know if this is appropriate time.
Can you please state your first and last name for the record, just, I didn't hear it first, thank you.
Yes, I don't know if this is appropriate time, given County Council's comment, and so I just want the commissioners to know that I'm here to address, um, some comments on behalf of the applicant. So if you want to wait till questions are posed, um, I'm happy to wait, or if this is appropriate time, we can do so now.
Um, I would prefer to have public comment and then I can close it and bring it back to the applicant, so you guys can have a chance to, um, respond. So if you wanna take your two and a half minutes right now or wait till after the public comments are closed, that's fine too.
I can wait, thank you.
Thank you. Jake, so no one else that has not spoke in the Zoom room, correct?
I believe that is the case. The only hand I have raised is, was, um, Mr. Solit.
Thank you. Anyone in chambers wish to comment on this before I close public comment and let the applicant respond? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and, um, I will give the, um, applicant or did the, uh, did your attorney want to speak on your behalf? Yes?
Yes, and then also Richard.
Okay. So whoever wants to go first, whether it's your, um, attorney or Richard.
Richard, you wanna go first?
Well, again, this is Richard Knoll. You know, there were a number of comments about security, um, and reference to last year's cultivation activities. There was a tenant on the site last year, no longer there. A, a new tenant will be, um, operating the cultivation project and obviously will be subject to all of the conditions of approval that, um, have been recommended by staff, which include the erection of a, uh, security fence around both of the cultivation areas. And I would, uh, I haven't talked with the applicant about this, but if there is a concern about visibility from Glenbrook Road, I, there are some additional, uh, things that could be done to, to, uh, you know, visually obscure, uh, from that, um, really minor roadway. It is quite a distance actually from, uh, the, the southernmost grow site A, uh, and there is a creek in between, there is vegetation in between, um, you know, so, uh, but if there is a need to do additional screening, I'm sure that's something that, that, you know, would be possible. The site is very isolated in terms of its location and, um, so, um, you know, with respect to some of the activities that occurred last year, um, you know, cars parking on adjacent roads, tho- those, that shouldn't be occurring. And, you know, if it does occur, it should be, you know, uh, resolved, um, but, um, I'm not sure anybody was really aware of that. And, um, so I, I don't know if there are any additional, uh, comments or responses. The attorney may have a, a comment.
That'd be great. I just wanted to say we got three hundred and twenty-nine sig- signatures of support.
Okay.
And eleven of those signatures are within a thousand.
As your, okay, thank you, thank you. Did the attorney wanna speak?
Please, Rebecca, would you be able to speak, please?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm unmuted.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So not to, I don't wanna reiterate too much what, uh, Mr. Knoll had already said, but there is a sec- plan for security fence around the site, so that should hopefully alleviate some of the concerns that some neighbors were raising as to invisibility and, um, security. And, you know, just to restate, the applicant is empathetic towards, um, concerns of the neighbors. And seconding what Mr. Knoll said, you know, po- potentially there could be a plan to further, um, obscure the, uh, the site from that Glenbrook Road, uh, so it's not so disturbing to the neighbors. But I did wanna address briefly the water, um, issue which was raised by a couple of neighbors. There are two sources, uh, one is a well, which is active, working well, um, despite maybe some, uh, information that wasn't correct, that one of the neighbors had said, is the well working? It is in fact working and that is a source of water. And as to the water taken from the creek, there are requirements, um, that the applicant is abiding by as to reporting what they are taking from the creek and reporting that to the state water board. Um, there are caps on that, so they are not just, um, you know, taking abundantly whatever they'd like from the creek. It is monitored, they are aware of it, um, and of course, they wanna preserve that for everybody. Those were the primary issues I wanted to address and if the commission has additional questions, I'm happy to assist.
Thank you. Commissioner Hess, do you want to say anything or Commissioner Chavez? Okay, turn on your mic.
Yeah, I have a few questions for the applicant. Um, so in regards to shipping containers, were the previous shipping containers removed from the previous operation?
Yes.
And then new ones were brought in or are going to be?
Well, we plan to, yeah.
Okay.
And also in regards to those shipping containers.
The biologist came out and measured for us, so we can get the proper setback. Yeah, I'll land it for us. Sorry, go on, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead with your questions, uh, Commissioner Chavez, thank you.
Uh, another question, um, how many, uh, seasons or years has this property been used for cannabis cultivation?
Can the applicant please speak into the microphone so we have it for the record?
Yeah, speak, thank you, thank you.
Was that question answered?
Uh, yes.
One year, uh, of cannabis under an early activation.
Okay.
Which, just to be, so you, there, you don't live on the property?
I do have a residence on the property and I live there part-time, um, yes.
But you will be leasing it to?
Um, the growing part of it, I, I don't, I will not be doing the growing.
And as far as the, the fencing for the cul- the cultivation site, would you be actually open to fencing the entire area? Cause that's, I feel like it's a major concern for your neighbors.
We do have a fence around most of the ninety-nine percent of that property, cause my dad raised cattle on it. We are proposing an eight-foot high fence with privacy slots around the grow area. And actually Glenbrook Road is on our property. I'm willing to put up a shade cloth on that road if I have to. That would probably satisfy the view. Cause our southern part of our property is Glenbrook Road.
Thank you. Commissioner Hess?
Um, that, the last comment addressed one of the questions I wanted to raise. First, first of all, I wanted to say while I'm not a big fan of shipping containers on ag property, they are not a disqualifier. The fact that they will be present does not mean this application is, is not valid. However, um, we have taken mitigation measures in the past to either alter their appearance or use fencing to, um, to improve the viewscape for surrounding neighbors and houses. And if the applicant is willing to do those two things she just mentioned, I think that would go a long way to addressing concerns along Glenbrook Road.
Yes, we will.
I can't hear the applicant's comments.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one more question. With regards with, uh, security, what is, uh, the general, uh, like idea of what you guys are, uh, planning on doing as concerns from the community?
Yes, along with our security plan, which is the proper cameras that's required, we, the tenant will have a twenty-four-seven security, uh, company there. So probably one person, twenty, you know, different shifts.
It'll be a company?
Twenty-four-seven, yes.
Any, uh, other comments from, uh, the commissioners at all?
No more questions.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, no, no more questions, just a comment. We also always can take community concerns into account and listen carefully. And, uh, while the, the application is qualified, um, if we can address specific concerns like the view from Glenbrook Road, we do our best to do that and to be responsive to the people that live in the vicinity of the project. And I hope that the fact that we are taking these additional steps reflects the fact that, um, we also hear the community. We're not just here as advocates for the applicant.
Absolutely, Commissioner Hess, and I feel that the surrounding community area, um, definitely are not, um, they're in opposition to this project. People have mentioned the noise, the lights, um, and things of that nature. I, I could only, um, identify, or with the fencing, that's one thing I, I would like to see, um, the shipping containers, just like, I, I'm, I'm not a fan, but visually they're not, they're not pleasing unless they are, um, obscured in some type of way. Those are, those are really my main concerns, security, um, and not being on, like, just not being on the property, not being, like, neighbors mentioning that they were not notified. Um, and if they did send an email back six months ago and didn't get a response, um, that, I don't know, I just, that's all I have to say. I kinda lost my, I lost my train of thought. I just, I, I know that you have good intentions and that you would like to be welcomed by the community and, you know, work, work with them. We all, we, you know, they addressed something and you want to fix it, I think that that's a great thing and that's what we're here to address.
Yeah, the problem is, is the address is here, you cannot mail to these people. We don't have mail in our area. Um, we went door to door, we did reach out. In fact, I called Raul a couple times and I, I never even got a call back, so I was shocked to hear him today. I'm happy to see the other couple, um, at the end of the road, they said they got something in the mail from us, but it's hard to reach out to these people unless you, and sometimes they have a lot of dogs and things that scare you when you enter their properties. So, thank you.
Madam Chair. Scotti Leone, interim director. If I could respect the request that you reopen, uh, the public, uh, comment period, uh, I've received an email, uh, that it's been requested that I read it into the record.
Um, I will go, I would be happy to go ahead and open public comment again. So if you would like to read that into the record?
Thank you. Um, this is an email I received at ten forty this morning from Supervisor Paeska, and she is forwarding a, uh, email complaint from a constituent who preferred to remain anonymous. So I will read that to the, into the record. Hi, Jessica, I am writing to register my complaint against the major use permit, U.P. twenty dash thirty-seven, applicant Charlene Wignall and Francis Wignall. Kelsey Creek, along with all tributaries to Kelsey Creek, cannot afford another permit for water extraction for any commercial use at this time. I cannot imagine that wildlife, fish and game would allow such diversion of water. We are in a severe drought and who knows how bad this summer will be. I oppose the use permit, not only for the extraction of water from the creek, but a business that will attract outsiders that do not le- leave near or on the creek, that will impact the use of the egress and ingress from Bottle Rock Road through to Glenbook Brook Road and well as negative impact of the security and well-being of the neighbors surrounding the area. I read that, uh, exactly as it was typed. Thank you.
Thank you. And since I do have public comment open at this time, Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room that are raised?
Uh, we do currently have three hands in the Zoom room, uh, four hands in the Zoom room raised.
Okay.
The first hand I have raised up here is, uh, Nakula Hertz. I sent you an, all right, looks like you're muted, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, hi, my name is Nakula Hertz.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I'm just, um, I just would like to, just to object to any more cannabis growth in the area, there's just so much going on and acres of acres of, of more land is just too much, I think, for our areas. So I just wanted to voice that out as a local resident here.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, the, um, the next hand up I have is from, uh, Raul Goff. Uh, uh, do we want to take repeats? I, I think he spoke.
He spoke already.
Um, I understand that he spoke already, however, um, I feel that we had a chance to, to let you speak and if he has a rebuttal, then I will give you the same oppor- I will give the applicant the same opportunity to respond to any of these other comments. So yes, Jake, please go ahead and let him speak.
Okay, s- okay.
Thank you.
All right, I have given you, uh, speak, it looks like you're muted?
Okay, yes, thank you for giving me some additional time to speak. So just a couple things, um, one is, I'm a, I'm a member of the Cobb Area, um, Business Council. You know, these types of projects do change the composure of an area and what it's known for and what, what people are coming to the area to experience. So, um, I, I do wanna urge the commission to consider that, that there's a, there's a very large effort that's going on between local businesses trying to attract people to Boggs Mountain and, and other, you know, areas for biking, wellness, hiking and things like that. Uh, we've opened, uh, you know, about a hundred acres of hiking, uh, trails on our property that is open to the public. Um, and, and this is the direction strategically, long-term, that we want this specific area, which is originally a resort area to, to go in. Bringing in cannabis grows into an area which is, is, has been designated for resort use and for the public does impact the whole community. And this is very much right in the heart of an area which has been used for generations and including this particular property, which was a kid's summer camp, which is why the water permit was originally granted for it. You know, it's just a complete change in use. So there's lots of other parts of the county where grow operations could go on. In, in this area, the neighbors, every neighbor that I've spoken to and everybody surrounding the property is against it and I, I don't understand why, and I've had this experience in, in, in other counties, I don't understand why there doesn't need to be a percentage of the neighbors that are okay with this. If they're all a hundred percent against it, I don't understand how the commission can grant it, especially when it's a change in use. So, um, I, I share the concerns about the water table and Kelsey Creek. I think that's a real issue, especially as we enter into a heavy fire season. Um, I just can't think of any really good reasons why this progress, this, this, uh, project should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I just wanna add that the, the, the applicant does not live on the property.
I'm sorry, we are out of time. Thank you so much for your comments.
Jake, is there any other hands in the Zoom room?
Uh, yes, I have one last hand in the Zoom room from Michael Salit.
Thank you.
I've sent, uh, I've given you permission to unmute and I sent you a mute request. All right, looks like you're muted.
Thank you. And, and, Commissioner, thank you and excuse my passion, but I've been here since two thousand ten.
Could you please say your first and last name for the record, please? Thank you.
My name is Michael Salit. I've been here since two thousand ten. I used to own Glenbrook and Glenbrook was an incredible piece of property. I purchased Adam's property behind Glenbrook and was the person that sold my property to Raul Goff. I had been here, I used to be a res- I had been here, I used to be a resident in Marin County and I moved to Lake County because it is the most amazing county that I've ever lived in. And my property is adjacent and I love my property, I love my neighbors. There are 1,600 acres that we all have combined. Not one of us wants this project. The, the unfortunate part is that nobody was communicated to when there was a grow put in last year. Nobody was informed, it all of a sudden showed up, it was very, very abrupt. No, there was no communication between the Wignalls and any of the neighbors. And then there was all kinds of things that were done that were not done according to what we believe is correct for our area and our location. I have teenagers, I have family, we have, we, we are a family community. We are a very close-knit community. We respect each other's privacy, we respect each other's, you know, being. We, we, you know, the relationship that, that we have with Mandala Springs and Glenbrook is very, very good. All of our neighbors work together for, for the, for the best for our community. There is not one positive aspect of putting this grow in the middle of this community that anybody here can support. I am very sorry that we were not notified. I'm very sorry that the Wignalls did not communicate to, to the neighbors. I'm very sorry, but this is way too big of an impact on our community to allow this use to move forward. The three-quarters of a mile that I share is, is absolutely, totally in view. And I do not want people on Glenbrook Road coming into, to, to our area looking to, to, to be vandalized or to be, to, to break into their grow or whatever. We don't need that in our world. This is a very, very tight community, this is a family camp next door, and we completely oppose this grow. Thank you for your time, excuse my passion, but I have been here, this is my property, this is my home, and I want to protect it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Jake, if there's any, there's no more hands in the Zoom room, correct?
There are currently no more hands in the Zoom room, correct?
Okay, since public comment is still open, I will give the applicant a chance to respond if you would like.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the, the general comment that I'd like to make with respect to county policy is that the Lake County Board of Supervisors, along with the Planning Commission, went through an extensive process and procedure in the development of the county's cannabis ordinance. And there was significant public input, comments, recommendations, changes. And ultimately, the Board of Supervisors adopted the ordinance and in fact does allow, through the use permit process, the cultivation of cannabis within areas such as the, you know, the Bottle Rock Road, multiple areas within, within the county. The application process itself is extensive. There are multiple technical documents, including a property management plan, nitrogen management, site management, storm drainage plans, security plans, biological assessments, cultural resource assessments, extensive documentation and plans required to be submitted and reviewed by the county planning department. And then there is this public notice requirement that is engaged in as part of the public review and public hearing process. And so the applicant in this case has, has really met the obligation. The project is well-designed, the project is safe and secure. That does not mean that there won't be some issue or problem that might be, that might occur in the future, but there is a mechanism to address those as part of this use permit process, including an annual review required by the Community Development Department. The applicant has shown their willingness to consider really any appropriate mitigation, whether it be an environmental issue or, or a use permit condition. We're willing to address the concerns. We're not saying those concerns are wrong, but you know, there is another side of the story here in terms of the applicant's process and procedure, in terms of what they've engaged in. So we want to be part of the community too and, and will do anything really that the Planning Commission believes is appropriate to, to engage in this use.
Thank you. I wanted to say that Glenbrook Road is about a mile and a half past the camp. I mean, before you get to the, our, our property. And we are giving up our use permit for our children's camp completely, going into the cannabis cultivation. Thank you.
Commissioner, Rebecca Rose, if I can just add briefly to Mr. Noll before you close?
Go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to address very briefly a couple of the last comments and that I don't believe it's an accurate statement to say that all of the neighbors are against this application. The applicant has the exact number, but I think it was over 300 neighbors and community members were in support of the application. And just to clarify, they, they are requesting a permit for water use out of Kelsey Creek that already exists, that right to extract the water, it is capped. And, and just on a positive note, the project would generate substantial tax revenue in the cultivation tax, which benefits all community members. So I, I just want to read it, there is, there are some positive outcomes to approving the project plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And is there any final things that you'd like to, any comments from the commission at all?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hess.
This is John, thanks. Just a comment, I am prepared to move forward with this application. I just wanted to make a couple of points in response to what I've heard. Technically, there, this really isn't a change of use. It was used in the prior year for cannabis cultivation. While unpopular, clearly, it is zoned properly for such a use and the Planning Commission has no control over that. The eight-foot fence structure is as high as, you know, we can ask them to build a fence and the additional measures to obscure the view from Glenbrook Road, I think should be made a condition of approval. The way I read the application in the initial study, it looks like there could be four employees at peak season and I don't think that represents an enormous increase in the number of day trips in and out of the facility. And I just want to assure the public that commissioners don't wake up every morning deciding which neighborhood they want to, you know, helicopter marijuana grow in. We really have no control over the applications that come to us. And we don't know until we see the agenda which part of Lake County might be the next place where an application crops up. But we have to take them as they're presented to us and use their criteria in the ordinance and Article 27 to make our determinations. Thanks.
Commissioner Hess, thank you for always having the clarity and, you know, reiterating why we're here and what we do and that it's not easy. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chavez, anything? I have no further comments, Commissioner Hess.
Well, in that case, in the absence of Commissioner Williams, I'm happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that, I mean, I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-37 was applied for by, was applied for by Bottle Rock Herbal Medicine LLC, Charlene Wignall, on property located at 13095 and 13130 Bottle Rock Road, Cobb, California, further described as APNs 011-039-37 and 011-039-38 will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration, shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 13, 2021, and as amended today.
A second.
Do we have to do a roll call vote or do I just have to agree? Because it has to be unanimous, right?
Roll call, roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price? Motion still carried.
Oh, yes, because I didn't, I didn't know if you heard me or not. Go ahead.
So there were three informative votes, in other words.
Yes.
Yeah. I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-37 was applied for by Bottle Rock Herbal Medicine LLC, Charlene Wignall, on property located at 13095 and 13130 Bottle Rock Road, Cobb, California, further described as APNs 011-039-37 and 011-039-38 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, Subsection 18, Subsection II, II, II of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 13, 2021, and as amended today.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Motion still carried.
Thank you. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is any disagreement with the Planning Commission and appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed, the applicant forms, or excuse me, the appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Bye.
How did it go?
I would like to have a five-minute break, please. I apologize, but it's, I, I need five minutes, thank you. Okay, I think we are all back and accounted for.
We are ready.
Okay, moving right along. Okay. Our 9/20 agenda item is a public hearing to consider major use permit UP 20-49. The applicant owner is VP Estates LLC, Ivan and Pavel Pavlov. Proposed project is two Type A 3B mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation licenses and one A Type 13 self-distribution license. The applicant is proposing 15 27.5 times 118-foot greenhouses, one 200-square-foot shed, 10 5,000-gallon water tanks, two 8-by-40 shipping containers, one six-foot-tall galvanized woven wire fence covered with, with privacy mesh to screen the greenhouse from public view. Total proposed cultivation area is 52,000 square feet, roughly 1.25 acres. Location is 1579 Leslie Lane in 6890 Boggs Lane, Kelseyville, California, on property consisting of 52-plus acres. APNs 007-010-54, which is the cultivation site, and then 007-010-20, environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration IS 20-60. And I believe Eric has his staff report or his project description.
I do, thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. Application is for a major use permit. Property is split-zoned, it's zoned RL and AG. Cultivation would actually occur on the AG portion of it. This is within a map farmland protection area. However, because they're going into greenhouses, which would have been required had they applied for an outdoor cultivation, they're fine in terms of greenhouse cultivation, given the farmland mapping that's recently adopted. I don't remember the ordinance number, I think it might be 3103, but that requires conversion to greenhouses within a specific period of time. They would be building the greenhouses immediately after approval, 15 total greenhouses. The sizes are indicated within the staff report. They've got two existing wells on the site. One was drilled in 1990, generates roughly 18 gallons per minute. Water depth on both wells is at 80 feet. There was relatively significant drawdown after a two-hour well test in 1990. The well dropped 40 feet, however, it recharged extremely quickly. So the water table, although it did have significant drawdown, also had a fairly significant recharge rate. The second well was drilled in 2005, generates about 10 gallons per minute. The applicant is proposing 50,000 gallons of water storage on site. I didn't do the math to see if that would be one day's worth of water or a week's worth. However, one plant typically uses six gallons per day. And in 52,000 square feet, rough math tells me that they'll have water capacity on site for probably no less than three days' worth of irrigation. Again, I didn't do the math on it, so that's just rough math in my head right now. General plan, I indicated there were two zones. Likewise, there were two general plan designations, agriculture and rural residential. Both allow commercial cannabis, subject to compliance with Article 51.4 and Article 27 sub AT. This is within the Kelseyville area plan. There is nothing within the Kelseyville area plan that would prohibit commercial cannabis, but there are some economic development findings that can be met through commercial cannabis within the Kelseyville area plan boundary. Again, I mentioned that there are two different zonings, agriculture and rural residential. There's also a waterway combining district due to the presence of the creek on the site. Applicant must maintain 100-foot setback from top of bank, they have done that. So we reviewed it for compliance with Article 27. We found that it did comply with the exception of separation from existing AG uses, which is a 500-foot minimum. There's agricultural uses established 220 feet south. However, I'm not convinced that that 500-foot separation has been adopted. At the time I wrote this, that was a hot topic. I didn't catch that until this morning, but I think that same issue came up in an earlier application that Satur had. And so I'm fairly confident that the fact that they're within greenhouses would negate that separation that I don't believe has been adopted. Environmental review, we sent an IS MND, CEQA document to the state along with supporting documents. We received no adverse comments regarding this proposal. We have mitigation measures related to aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, and noise that have been put into conditions of approval. We were able to meet the six findings required in Section 51.4 for a major use permit. Those are found on pages 10, 11, 10 and 11 of the staff report. We were also to meet, able to meet the findings found in Article 27 subsection AT, and there are three of them that apply to any commercial cannabis application. three of them that apply to any commercial cannabis application. Based on our ability to verify that each applicable part of the general plan, the Calceville Area Plan, and the Lake County zoning ordinance were met, we're recommending that the negative declaration be adopted. It's file number IS 20-60, and that the Planning Commission approve use permit UP 20-49, subject to the findings that are listed within the staff report on Page 13. And with that, I will entertain any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you very much, Eric. I wasn't clear, I do have a question. I wasn't clear if the main road, the Leslie, is that going to be their main access road? I know that there's two different roads to get to the property. I wasn't clear, and I wasn't sure if they were going to be, which road that they have actually designated for their main access point.
Well, the driveway, the primary driveway, I believe, accesses Leslie Lane, but there is a secondary onto Boggs, unless I've got my roads mixed up.
No, and you're right. And there's more than one way to get up there, and that's also, I believe, why there's two different parcels. I was just curious if, just as far as the dust mitigation on that dirt road, like if there was anything that was addressed with that, if that's going to be their main access point.
Yeah, it would have to be through PRC 4290 and 4291, which are basically the CAL FIRE road requirements. Anytime you have anything requiring a building permit, the roads have to be improved to a certain width, the gates have to be widened to a certain width. And one of the conditions, within the condition of approval, requires compliance with 4290 and 4291 road standards. And that would also take into account dust mitigation during construction and then following construction, which is, I believe, one of the air quality conditions that are a standard condition that we put in with all cultivation activities. So it covers construction and post-construction. Because there were 15 greenhouses, there would be some grading. Although the site's flat, it doesn't rise to the level of triggering even a simple grading permit. They can do up to 500 cubic yards of earth movement under the use permit. So they do not have to apply for a grading permit. They do have to mitigate dust. There was no serpentine soil, meaning asbestos, that's mapped on the site, so that's a good thing. That means if they disturb the dirt, they're not going to be triggering a lot of asbestos particulates, and they would have to water down any kind of dirt. Site preparation, site disturbance while they do it, which is a fairly standard dust mitigation measure.
Sure. Do you guys have any questions before we open it for a public comment? Commissioners at all?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Jake, is there anybody in the Zoom room that would like to speak? Well, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Yes, it looks like we have two hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you.
The first hand I have raised is from Brian. Brian, I've sent you a mute request. Looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
My name is Brian Denton. I have a question on Leslie Lane, it's a dirt road, and the one off of Boggs Lane. They are both dirt roads. Once they're done with construction, they're going to be driving on these dirt roads, and we do nothing but eat dust as it is. If that's going to be a commercial grow, what are you going to do as far as mitigating the dust? There's five houses on this road, and we all have a problem with it, and we have a problem with low water table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, is there another hand raised in the Zoom room?
Yes, the next hand we have raised is from Nancy.
Hi, my name, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Your first and last name.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Lewis. I'm speaking for my husband Edward Lewis. The proposed property of the cannabis grow borders two sides of our property. I had four main comments. One of them, Brian also alluded to, was the water. Two points on that, that there are contaminants that leach as a byproduct of the fertilizing process, concerns that we have leaching into our groundwater, and as we have a well, that could negatively impact our well. Also, because of the drought situation, the water table here is not particularly high right now, so that is a big concern, the size of this. The second point is the road use. Boggs Lane is in disrepair. It is not a two-lane road. If there are trucks using this road, there's going to just be more traffic, more disrepair. Third point is, for any of us living in this area, I have talked with two different realtors. They both concurred that our home values are, could likely have a loss in our home value because of the commercial grow. Anywhere from eight and a half up to 20%. As a resident here of over 30 years, that is very disconcerting to us. Third point is just the overall change in this quiet, peaceful, beautiful landscape that we are going to experience. We've enjoyed the quiet, having animals. It's been lovely. That will forever be changed with this commercial cannabis grow. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any more hands in the Zoom room, Jake?
Yes, we have two more hands again in the Zoom room. The next hand I have raised is from Ken Stockton. Can I allow you to speak and send you an mute request? Looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ken Stockton, and my wife, Rhonda Stockton, were both listening in. We are currently and hopefully going to stay at 6860 Boggs Lane for the next 20, 30 years if we live that long. We border the property, and I'd just like to back up what Brian and also Nancy brought up, that we're not for this. I listened in on the last meeting on the Bottle Rock one, and it sounds like we have very little say in the matter once it's been approved. But along with the Boggs Lane concerns Nancy brought up, it's a single-lane road in disrepair, and it is paved, but a lot of chuck holes in it. We currently, mostly, I know we're zoned for AG and residential, but we're mostly residential on Boggs and kind of on Leslie Lane. We had a walnut orchard at the end of Boggs that got converted a few years ago over to a vineyard, but the traffic has greatly increased since they went from walnuts to grapes. But other than those two, that one and the old orchard, which they purchased up on the top of the hill, there wasn't much AG going on on our two streets. It's all around us. The vineyards are all around us, but on our two streets, it's mostly residential. So we just, we're not in favor of it. We're worried about our property values, and we're worried about increased traffic. And also, that was brought up on the Bottle Rock meeting, the increased possibility of residual crime and the type of people that this kind of cultivation brings along with it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next hand we have up is from Vanessa Valar. I've sent you a mute request. All right, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Vanessa Valare.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Vanessa Valare, and I'm the consultant that generated the paperwork for this permit, along with my staff. I just wanted to speak to a few of the neighboring concerns, just kind of spell them out a little bit more clearly. First, I wanted to speak to the water. We have two wells, two sources of water. Combined together, they can produce well over 20,000 gallons a day. However, our project at maximum peak operations, we estimate the most we would need to use would be around 7,000 gallons a day. We do our proposing 50,000 gallons worth of water storage, which would give us enough water storage for approximately seven, six and a half to seven days, just in case we were to have a problem or need to wait for groundwater recharge. We also have two fire tanks as well that are metal of 5,000 and 3,000-gallon tanks, so we would have additional water if there were a need for an emergency on site. Our client plans to use water-saving methods and the newest drip irrigation technology to not only save water, but to also reduce the amount of wastewater discharge that the site would produce. We have a pretty intense wastewater discharge plan to keep all contaminants out of the ground and from leaching into the groundwater supply of the area. In addition to that, I just wanted to also reiterate that there will be no visible structures from any of the neighboring parcels where we propose to put the structures. The new landowner's and his wife are the operators and the cultivators, and they are keeping the original owner, Dennis, who is also on the line to speak to help manage the property. We tend to keep it in the spirit of Lake County and in the spirit of the neighborhood. We also intend to gravel Leslie Lane in its entirety and keep it maintained and well-gravelled. We also have a condition of approval to pave or chip seal the encroachment from Boggs Lane onto the county road. I also wanted to bring up about the traffic, that this cultivation is strictly just a cultivation. There will be no processing on site. Therefore, the amount of employees that this cultivation needs is very minimal compared to other operations, and there won't be the succeeding huge amount of traffic since the operators and cultivators and the property manager all live on site. I just kind of wanted to bring that to the commission's attention, that this really isn't going to be a huge impact as far as cars and trucks and the other, because when the product is done being harvested, it will be leaving the site at that point, and there will be no employees for processing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment and clarification. Jake, is there any other hands raised?
Yes, we have another hand raised here from Brian. All right, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hello, I'm Brian Denton. I just had a quick couple of questions for Vanessa. She said that they were going to gravel Leslie Lane. Is that the entirety of it, or are they going to chip seal and control the dust? And then on Boggs Lane, Boggs Lane is only 15 feet wide. How are they going to address the one-way traffic deal? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. If the consultant would like to respond to that, please do so.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, just state your name again, please.
Vanessa Valare.
Thank you.
Yes, the applicant does intend to gravel the entirety of Leslie Lane. As far as Boggs Lane is concerned, as far as I'm aware, our conditions of approval refer to chip sealing or paving the encroachment onto the county road of Boggs Lane, and Leslie Lane would be our main entrance, not Boggs Lane, and we would be keeping up with the gravel applications on Leslie Lane. I'm not sure if that addresses it enough, or if the commission has other, maybe responses for that, or Eric Porter, but that's as much as I know as far as where the roads are concerned.
Okay, thank you. Jake, is there any other hands in the Zoom room that haven't, that we haven't addressed yet? Anybody in the Zoom room?
Yes, we have a new hand up from Dennis Reynolds.
Okay.
Dennis, I've sent you a unmute request.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Dennis Reynolds. I've lived up here on the property for about 13 years now, and I would just like to convey what the new property owners have done up here. The previous, well, previous owner of the one side was my great aunt, and she'd lived here since the 70s, actually helped build the house up here. And the other owner was Stuart McCannister, that had about a 17-acre walnut orchard that was really dilapidated and overgrown with brush. And in the last six to eight months, we've done a lot of work up here at the new owner's approval and desire, and I just would like to convey that they really love this place up here. They've done a lot to, or allowed me to do quite a bit to improve the aesthetics of the property. They definitely want to keep the walnut orchard as much as they can and rehabilitate that, which I'm in the process of doing now. The, I think the amount of traffic is the biggest concern that people have, and that's going to be limited, because the owner and myself are going to do as much of the work up here as far as constructing the greenhouses and that. And then everything's going to be, you know, there's going to be mechanical operation as far as watering and that kind of stuff. So I don't think there's going to be much traffic. In the mitigation for gravelling the road, that's always been a concern. And as Brian, I know he has to deal with the dust, as do most people on the road. If that's gravelled, that's going to take care of a big concern for everybody. Anyway, just would like to state that these new owners are really concerned with improving the property, and I think it's going to be a nice operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Jake, is there anybody else in the Zoom room?
I currently only have one hand raised, and I'm not sure if it's a repeat or if it's a stale hand raised from a previous comment.
Okay.
So it is from Brian. Should I try to check for a duplicate comment or a second comment?
I mean, if you want to unmute him, I mean, that's fine with me, but if that's the only thing, we'll just get it wrapped up.
Hi, Brian, I sent a mute request to check in with your raised hand.
I think it might just have been a stale hand.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Okay. Anyone in chambers wish to speak on this agenda item? I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Any comments or questions? I feel that the consultant identified and kind of made me feel better about the road usage and doing the chip seal and the gravel, because that was my biggest thing. When you go, if you're familiar with the way the land is out there, there is AG everywhere, there's residences, and that was my main concern, was the roads and the use.
Commission, if I could point out one condition that probably needs to be modified.
Sure.
It's condition number I-1. It refers to PRC 4290 and 91 road standards. I think it needs to specify that the entirety of Leslie Lane needs to be improved prior to cultivation with adequate road base, which could be gravel, it could be chip seal or pavement, that's adequate to satisfy PRC 4290 and 4291. I think that needs to be included in there because it's vague in terms of the duration of what they're going to improve.
Okay.
And since they offered it, it makes sense to me that we would include that. I also wanted to point out, under condition number C-4, it talks about dust palliative. It actually indicates that all areas that are disturbed must be watered down. must be watered down during site construction. It doesn't refer to ongoing road maintenance, but if they're gonna improve Leslie Lane, that'll help settle the dust with the gravel that they apply to the surface of it.
I agree, and I appreciate the clarification on that to get it in there like that. Commissioner Hess or Commissioner Chavez, any comments or questions?
I had a number of questions that were addressed pretty adequately by either the consultant or the onsite, the onsite manager. I was concerned about how local of a connection there was to this operation with Mr. Pavlov being located in Chicago, I believe. But knowing that, having heard from Dennis, and I'm sorry, I forget your last name, that you've lived on the property for as long as you have and that the property on the other side was owned by your great aunt, it reassures me that you have a sense of the community and the area that the grow will be in. Thank you.
All right, I agree, and I'll echo that as well. And to hear that the cultivator and all of that's going to be onsite, that if I was a neighboring property, that would make me feel good as well. So, thank you for that.
And I appreciate all the information that has come up. I think that there's been a lot of things that have been mitigated, the dust itself. For me, hearing that the wells are over 18 gallons per minute, I was, I'm always looking for seven to 10 gallons per minute per acre. So that seems to me that, that seems to be reasonable. It is in an ag area that has supported ag for some time. So I'm really quite happy to see, to see that it is in an ag area and it was already scheduled to be in a greenhouse. So it's not like we're having to change this thing over. It was on letter A. So this probably, you know, took some time to, you know, get here, and I see 18. So, so I'm very happy to set a motion forward. And hearing from the neighbors, again, about some of the things that cannabis use, I think that it's very nice to have something that's pretty close to organic gardening and isn't gonna be using neurotoxins as pesticides. So I think that for me, I feel really quite good about doing a motion.
Excellent. Anyone, if you guys are prepared to do so, by all means.
I would like to do a motion, mitigated negative declaration. I move the planning commission find that the initial study, IS 2060, applied for by VP Estates on property located 1579 Leslie Lane and 6890 Boggs Lane, Kelseyville, and is APNs 007-010-20 and 54 will not have a significant effect on the environment.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I also put a motion for major use permit UP 20-49. I move the planning commission find that the use permit 20, UP 20-49, applied for by VP Estates on property located 1579 Leslie Lane and 6890 Boggs Lane, Kelseyville, and is APNs 007-010-20 and 54, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 26, 22, 2021.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Price? I'm sorry, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Please note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period if there is a disagreement with the planning commission, and appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Sorry. Moving on to agenda item number five. It is our 925 item. Public hearing to consider a minor use permit MUP 18-28. Applicant is Noble Farms owner Patricia, excuse me, Patricia Lanier. The proposed project is a six-phase development for commercial cannabis that would include three commercial cannabis cultivation licenses, two A-type, 2B mixed light cannabis licenses to allow phase development of 10,000 square feet of outdoor canopy area and one greenhouse for immature plants by the end of phase six and a Type 13 self-distribution license that would allow legal transportation of cannabis to and from site. Location is 18211 Ponderosa Trail, Lower Lake, California, APN 012-048-111. Environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration IS 18-33.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Couple of housekeeping items. First of all, we received, I guess it's about seven or eight comments in support of the project in addition to a end of consultation letter that I had sent to the Coy Nation dated June 29, 2020. And so I need to pass out the green sheets. For the benefit of Commissioner Hess, I'm gonna read into the record who they're from once I hand them out. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, Scott's gonna hand them out. John, so I'll go ahead and let you know who the letters are from and what they're dated. First one I mentioned, June 29, 2020, letter from me to the Coy Nation. Dino Beltran is the recipient. Concluded consultation with the Coy Tribe. Second letter is from Angela Carter in support of the project. No date. Third letter is from Barbara Blazer, RN, supporting the project, acting as a character witness to the applicant's. No date.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, I've got more. I'm just trying to fumble through them here. Next one's from Thomas Fullerton, also not dated, in support of the project, who's a resident of Dearborn, Michigan. One from a neighbor, Carol Littlefield, is also a cannabis cultivator, dated July 14, 2020, in support of the project. And then finally, a letter from Lisa Kaplan, who's a citizen of Hidden Valley Lake, in support of the project, and that letter is not dated. And that's all that I have.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Couple of clarifications. I didn't catch this until this morning. They are proposing a 3,200-square-foot drying building. It's shown on their site plan, but it's not very clearly identified. And I just want to make it part of the record that that is still included. And so they would, if approved, they would be building a 3,200-square-foot drying building. The initial project came in as a one-phase development in greenhouses. Oh, the other correction I need to make is the LLC. It's not an LLC, it's called Noble Gardens Inc., INC. And that's very relevant because that needs to be corrected on the conditions as well as on the site plan. So getting back to the actual proposal, it's a 40-acre property, it's zoned ag. It's in a fairly tight-knit community. They had applied in early 2018. This was scheduled to go to a public hearing, I believe, in early 2020, only to find out that the notice area was incorrect. We pulled it. Applicant decided to re-scope the project entirely to make it phased rather than a one-phase development. I'm guessing for tax purposes, but I don't know that. So what the applicant did is they created a phasing. Phase one has already been completed. That was the early activation that the county issued in 2020. Phase two would continue with phase one. It would have the initial 5,000 square feet of canopy and estimated 6,500 square feet of outdoor cultivation. The phasing doesn't define whether it's indoor or outdoor or mixed light. This is all outdoor. Applicant approached me this morning saying they wanted to do partial mixed light. However, given the lateness of the application, I told them that they would be better off to modify later and that it's too late in the process to make changes here at the hearing to that extent, which may affect CEQA. So they decided to proceed with the outdoor, and they may or may not modify it later. Phase three would continue with phase one. That would be 6,500 square feet of outdoor. Phase four would probably occur around 2023, and they would add 3,360 square feet of canopy within 4,000 square feet of cultivation area. Phase five, likewise, they would add the similar amount. Phase six, they would add yet a slightly smaller amount, and that would conclude their build-out, which would be a total of 15,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation. That's their taxable area with 10,000 square feet of plants. Went through all the project requirements. They can do agricultural outdoor in the ag zone, provided they're not in a mapped high-value farmland area, and they're not. There are no ag uses that I'm aware of that are within 1,000 feet of the property. We reviewed it against the general plan, the Lower Lake area plan, and Article 50.4, minor use permits, and 27 point, I'm sorry, 27 subsection AT, which is required for any commercial cannabis. We reviewed it against Article 5, the agricultural zoning district, and there are no combining zones that are on the face of the property, so there were no subzones that we had to look at. We did the CEQA evaluation, we actually did two of them. We sent the original one to the State Clearinghouse in, I think it was late 2019. But when the scope changed, we had to redo it. We resubmitted, went back to the State Clearinghouse a second time. And neither time were there any adverse comments that we had received from the state. We did find that certain mitigation measures are needed, specifically affecting air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, tribal resources. And that was basically it. The ground disturbance is minimal, so we did not include noise. Staff didn't think that this rose to the level of triggering any kind of noise mitigation measures. There is a prohibition on using generators for primary power source. That's a standard condition of any commercial cannabis application. We reviewed it against the findings for approval found in Section 50.4 under minor use permits. There are six of them. We found that they met each one of the six requirements that we had to address. We reviewed it against Article 27 subsection AT, subsections 1, 2, and 3 within that chapter that have required findings for approval, and we found that all three of those findings were met. Based on an extensive review, and a very lengthy review time, we are recommending that the planning commission adopt mitigated negative declaration IS 1833 addendum, as has been changed by staff and resubmitted to the state, and approve revised minor use permit MUP 18-28 with the findings listed on pages 11 and 12. And the motions are self-explanatory. Again, if you decide to approve this today, it needs to clearly indicate that that's subject to the changes discussed within the hearing. I do need to modify the name, Noble Gardens Inc. It's currently shown as being Noble Ranch LLC. That's incorrect. So that would have to be changed on the conditions and on the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Eric. Any questions from the commissioners before I open it up for public comment? Questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak on behalf of the applicant or the agenda item? Okay. Anything in the, anyone in the Zoom room, Jake?
There are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay.
One thing I did want to clarify that I didn't touch on is the water. Water is gonna be an increasing hot button, I think, for cannabis. And they do have one well on the site. The well test was done recently. It generates 12 gallons per minute, had a rapid recharge rate. Depth to water was 363 feet. The depth of the well was actually 484 feet, and the recharge was almost spontaneous on this well. And I think that was after a four-hour run. So it's got a fairly strong water table.
Thank you for that. Since there is no public comment, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission if you guys are ready to, if you're prepared to make a motion.
And Chair?
Commissioner Hess?
I am prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
One quick question, Eric. On the second matter, the minor use permit, do I need to use the word revised as the way addendum is added to the first motion?
He just, he wants to just make sure that if he has to add that when he does his motion, does he need to say revised, right?
I don't think you do.
Okay.
Because there's only one minor use permit, 1828, before the planning commission.
And should it, should he also, as amended here today, because you're changing the name on the?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Great, thanks. I move that the planning commission find that the initial study addendum IS 18-33, prepared for the project proposed by Patricia Lanier, Noble Gardens Inc., on a property located at 18211 Ponderosa Trail, Lower Lake, further described as APN 012-048-111, will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration, shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 13, 2021, and as amended here today.
I second that.
Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please. Jake, Carrie Anne, Bueller?
Carrie Anne, you're still muted.
Now the suspense is?
Let's, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. I further move that the planning commission find that the minor use permit MUP 18-28, applied for by Patricia Lanier, Noble Gardens Inc., on a property located at 18211 Ponderosa Trail, Lower Lake, further described as APN 012-048-111, does meet the requirements of Section 50.4 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the minor use permit be granted subject to the conditions, and with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 13, 2021, and as amended today.
I second that.
Roll call vote, please.
I guess all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes, thanks, Scott.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period if there is a disagreement with the planning commission, and appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. And we are moving on to our next agenda item. This is a continuation for, or from public hearing from April 22, 2021 to consider major use permit UP 19-46. Applicant owner is Stuart Spyback. Proposed project applicant is applying for a total of 28,012 square feet canopy area within a total of 28,252 square feet of cultivation area and facilities, including two 120-square-feet accessory structure and water tanks. Location is 1027 Water Trough Road, Location is one zero two seven Water Trough Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California, APNs six twenty-eight dash one zero zero dash one zero. Environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration is IS one nine dash six five. Staff?
Hi Commissioners. So I received a application from, I'm sorry, an email from the applicant Stuart Spivak. He would like to request that his project be continued on June tenth.
On to June tenth, so it's a said date? Okay, is that one of our scheduled meeting days?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Is there a reason for that that is related to the nature of the staff recommendation for this application?
It would allow the applicant to resolve some issues with the CCNR or the Double Eagle Ranch situation.
Okay, so he's, it has nothing to do with his permit per se, just a couple of things that are?
In play right now, yeah.
Okay. Am I allowed to make a motion to reschedule, or does somebody else have to do that since I'm chair?
The chair cannot make an initial motion, but the chair can second while sitting in the chair.
In the chair, okay.
If you want, if you wish to make a motion, then you would have to hand your gavel over temporarily.
Okay. Before I go ahead and do that, I have, I can't not look out at the, at them and I believe that they are here for this, for this agenda item. What is, what is the best way for me to handle that? Because technically, we haven't, I mean, we've, it's on the floor, right? We just, staff just can't give a report?
Well, the staff can give a report. The public may comment if you wish to hear the comments.
Okay.
And then at some point, some, one of you could make a motion to continue. My understanding is that staff is recommending a continuance because they really can't see any reason. There wouldn't be really prejudice to any party to continue this item. The project wouldn't be going forward, the applicant wouldn't be harmed because they're requesting it. But if you wish to hear comments today, you may do so. We just have to be cognizant of that in the future, that if you have left, that you've had comments already. So if you leave public comment open, you have to, you have to recognize that. Or if you close it, you have to reopen it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hess?
My inclination would be, and apologies to anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak today. We don't know what the staff report might look like on June tenth and whether comments today would still be wholly relevant. But if people would like to proceed, I don't want to limit anybody's opportunities to speak today. But it sounds to me that some things may be different on June tenth.
Understood. I do feel that I'm going to let, I would like to let them talk. Can we do, can we still just do a quick, not even a quick, but do you want to? Is it better to have her do the staff, like the report and then let them talk?
I, I would recommend being consistent as you always.
I understand.
Proceed as you generally do.
Yes.
If the rest of the commission is in agreement with continuing with comments and staff reports, then you can go forward that way today. And then at some point, it's appropriate whomever.
I'm following, I'm following. I would like, if you could please, if we're going to continue, I would like to hear what's in front of us and then go from there.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have it.
Do you have it?
Oh, no. Sorry.
Do you want a printout? I have the staff report.
Oh, no, I have the staff report. I did have a presentation prepared, but I don't have it with me.
That's okay.
Okay, so briefly going through this. So this is for a, what is it, a major use permit, UP nineteen dash forty-six. And the applicant is Frosty Oaks LLC. The project is proposing a one acre outdoor cultivation or license type. And it is for, without the use of light deprivation and it's in full sunlight. The proposed cultivation area is twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-two. And the proposed structures are a hundred and twenty square feet store shed, a hundred and twenty square feet security shed, for four five thousand gallon water tanks and two, two thousand five hundred gallon additional tanks. There is a correction on the staff report for the six thousand, or six hundred thousand two hundred and forty-seven gallons per year that will be, that's projected to be used. It's extremely less, and this is actually for a full acre. The applicant conforms with for the zoning, the zoning ordinance and the area plan and the general plan as listed in the staff report. The applicant provided a project management plan that outlines the cannabis operations and addresses the air quality, cultural resources, energy usage, fertilizer, fishing and wildlife protection, stormwater management, security, compliance, and monitoring. There was a, they were issued early activation last year. The, the biological resources was, let's see. Well.
I totally understand you were throwing a curve ball with, you know, getting ready to present it and then he wants to pull back and then I want you to still kind of give us some information. So I understand, I'm sorry. I was trying to thumb through it.
I'm trying to get it all organized in my head, but yeah.
I understand.
So.
See, Satur, maybe I could, I could jump in and help you? Okay. So where Satur's staff report is going is that with respect to the zoning and all of the other factors that we look at, for the land use, the project met those or had appropriate mitigations for them. Where you'll note that we're recommending denial of the project is based on, this property is within a subdivision that has CCNRs. And while it's not the county's responsibility to enforce the CCNRs, we are mindful and we do recognize that the CCNRs provide certain.
Rules and regulations.
Yeah, they provide specific details to, to what the community considers appropriate. One of the findings that's required for the approval of a use permit is that the operation will not, and I'll just read it to you. And it's, it's one of the, that's the very first major use permit findings of approval. And you're going to see that in virtually every use permit application that comes before you is that the, the operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the use, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use or be detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the county. It was staff's determination that as a result of the subdivisions CCNRs, which specifically prohibit commercial operations being conducted on lands within the subdivision, that we could not make the finding that this commercial project would not be detrimental to the overall measures that the CCNRs were meant to protect. So in the absence of being able to make the very first finding required for a use permit, we are recommending that your board deny, or your commission deny the application.
Thank you. Do you guys have any comments or questions as of right now? Okay, so Commissioner Hess, do you have any questions over there? Oh, he's muted. You're muted, but I can read your mouth. I will go ahead and open it up for, for public comment at this time. If anybody in chambers would like to speak about this agenda item, feel free. Or if there's anybody in, in the Zoom room, please let me know, Jake.
There are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, I have someone in chambers that would like to speak. Go ahead and approach the podium and just be sure to state your first and last name, okay? And I know you've been in here for a long time, so.
Thank you, my name is Angela Amaral. Double Eagle Ranch Homeowner Association Committee member. And I want to thank everybody, Scott, for taking a second look at this and recognizing our CCNRs and how this will affect our community. Property owners in the area agreed to the CCNRs when we purchased property in Double Eagle. And it strictly prohibits any kind of commercial business. We're hoping that the commission doesn't continue this item simply because the applicant has made no effort to reach out to the board since the last hearing. It's been over a month and he has not reached out to any of us. The only correspondence we received from him or his lawyer was a letter asking us to revoke a letter that we sent to the county in November of twenty twenty. We got a letter stating that they wanted us to revoke that letter. And if we didn't, we could face litigation. So we got threatened with a lawsuit. The other thing is that, let's see, the residents that you see here today before you or a portion that were here earlier, were traveling a long distance to come to these hearings. The applicant or his, his project contact liaison, neither one of them had made an effort to come to these meetings in person, by phone, or via Zoom. We're trying to keep our community the way it is. And we're just hoping that you guys don't continue this and agree with the staff's report of denying the application as it will cause, it's going to affect a lot of us out there. It's not just a couple, you see, there's not just, it's not two people sitting here in front of you. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to this and hear our concerns. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Hi there.
Hi, my name is Glenn Goodman. I'm a twenty-eight-year resident of Double Eagle and I'm on the committee also. And the applicant did request a meeting with us, but didn't tell us the purpose of the meeting. And we told him that members don't really call meetings. And we asked him what his concerns were and he never would tell us. First we learned about it was from the letter that they sent to the lawyer threatening a lawsuit. So my question to you is, is it possible to go through this proceeding today? If you decide not to continue? I don't know if they're in the Zoom room, if they are, they could participate, right? And so we could do this now. We, we think that what they want to do, we're having our annual meeting on Sunday. And it could be an exciting one, which some of them have been in history. And, but this one in particular looks like it could be very intense because they just want to change the CCNRs. They basically, you know, we have a community there, the county and the subdivider, set up Double Eagle Ranch to no longer be agriculture, but it was never farmland, but to turn it into a residential area. Now they're wanting to change it back into farmland and we just don't feel that we have the aquifer that will support it. We only have a few square miles of recharge area. And so we feel that would be the end of not just us as residents, but all, all the farms, everything would go away if we just hit on that very limited water supply. And so we're fighting for the lives of our homes. And now we're finding out that we're going to have to continue this fight on Sunday. And we would like to finish it today. We really do appreciate that the staff has recognized that this is not an appropriate use of a residential area and it does not fit in the residential area. And so we feel like we're, you know, I've put twenty-eight years of my life, Herb has put forty-nine years of his life into building homes here. And so we would like to get this over with and get it. We support the staff recommendation to deny it. And we don't feel like this is being hostile to growers in any way. It's purely about the reality of the situation under our feet and that it will not sustain this. And if we attempt it, we're all out. But will we be able to make that case Sunday? And my big question is, can we make that case today?
Thank you. Based on, thank you for your comment. Once I close public comment, I will bring it back to the commission and see how we would like to move forward. And I will say, based on us having the staff report, having all the information in front of us, doing it with public comment and all of that, I'm not sure how everyone else is feeling, but I feel like it's all in front of us. A continuation is not necessarily needed, but that's, moving on. Did you want to speak? Okay, there's one more person in chambers that's going to speak, I believe, or a couple more, okay.
And just a quick update about the Zoom room, I do have one hand raised now.
Okay. I will, Jake, if we can, I'll let him speak in chambers. And then while we're sanitizing, we'll open up to the Zoom room, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, go ahead and approach the podium, please be sure to state your first and last name, okay?
Hi, my name is Darius Swadia, I'm a committee member in Double Eagle Ranch and a resident of there. And I would like to echo the points that Angela and Glenn brought up. I don't have a whole lot else to say, but I don't see any reason to continue this. All the points have been brought up in written communications and things like that. I would have a whole bunch of environmental and other concerns as well. I don't see it as being necessary to go over them point by point. Regarding the CCNRs, we are not going to be changing them. There is nothing to talk about, there's three committee members, all three are here right now. So I can assure you, those are not getting changed, they haven't been changed since nineteen seventy-one. There is not going to be a modification that allows for commercial use. So based on their reason for request for a continuation, it seems very invalid to me. I appreciate the extra time that all of you took to go over the extra information that we submitted since last time. And thank you all.
Thank you. And just, CCNRs and homeowners associations, those rules and restrictions are there for a reason. And I, I just, I understand that, I echo it. Jake, if you wanted to unmute the raised hand in the Zoom room, that would be fantastic.
All right, I have a raised hand from George McDonald. Looks like you're unmuted, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, George McDonald, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. So George McDonald, I'm an attorney with Katzoff and Riggs here in Lake County. And besides that, I also grew up. And besides that, I also grew up on the Double Eagle Ranch. I lived there for about 14 years. The property directly adjacent to the proposed project site. And just to echo some of the other homeowners there, it really isn't a proper location for this type of operation. It's historically been a residential area, and it's quite new that a lot of people are moving in to attempt to do commercial cannabis. However, right, the property owners, they agreed to the CCNRs. They have full knowledge of that when they purchased the property. And now, they're trying to get around it. And I think that really, it's really, you know, it goes in line with what this applicant has done to his neighbors so far, threatening them with litigation because they want to enforce the CCNRs. He, you know, they've been cultivating out here for several years now. They haven't followed any rules. They're just now seeking a permit. They've done grading out there. They've done a lot of different things that have harmed the neighborhood and have become very concerning to the people that live there. A lot of noise, people driving back and forth, the generators going out there for a long time. I mean, I saw them with a tractor out there about a year ago grading. And, you know, and they really concealed that in their application, which is also concerning. It's just another thing in line with their MO here of concealing and not following the rules and just really having a complete disregard for their neighbors. And so, that, you know, even if somehow the CCNRs were found to not prohibit this, it should still be denied, because how can anyone trust the moving forward? This applicant here is going to follow any of the conditions of approval or any of the mitigation measures when they haven't. They haven't in the past at all. And so, thank you for your time. Thank you also for considering the CCNRs and the comments here of the concerned homeowners and other people who grew up in the area and would like to maintain it as a tranquil residential area as it was intended to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Is that the only hand in the Zoom room, Jake?
Oh, yes, that is still the only hand in the Zoom room.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak? Feel free to come up to the podium. And just be sure to state your first and last name, okay? Please.
Well, we can kind of hear you. There you go. Yeah. My name is Walter Dryce. Now I can hear you.
Yeah.
I've lived at Double Eagle Ranch for 20 years. I bought my property in 2000, designed my own home and built it myself. In 2015, a rocky fire came through and burnt my house to the ground. I'm very concerned about any further large agricultural activity being permitted on Double Eagle Ranch subdivision. There's already more than the limited fragile infrastructure can sustain. The size and scope of the proposed agricultural project would devastate Double Eagle subdivision. Our roads are barely maintained by the community, and additional heavy institutional use In these drought years, at the elevation of Double Eagle Ranch, the water table is already compromised, and more heavy usage would probably deplete it. What I worry about is, I'm not afraid of my house burning down again that much, but each summer, I am afraid for myself and others that more fire will occur on Double Eagle Ranch. And when the fire engine gets up our narrow, winding, steep mountain road and finally arrives where it's trying to protect the location, will there be enough water to fight the fire? In my experience, there wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, you can come up, but Sam's going to sanitize COVID-style. Yeah?
Yeah, hi, I'm Wayne Bergstrom. My wife and I built our retirement home on Double Eagle Ranch about six years ago. And when we bought the property over 14 years ago, we were fully cognizant of the CCRs and feel that this major use permit for a commercial grow is not consistent with the community or our CCRs. I recommend that this board vote this no. Lot of water trucks coming up the road that really pound it. All our budget goes every year to fix that road, so we have access to our properties. And we reached out to the growers to ask for some extra money voluntarily. Nobody responded to that. Nobody's come forward from this project to try to come to our meetings and, you know, plead their case. So, with the CCRs in place, I feel that I was protected from this kind of use. And I recommend you vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else out there like to speak? I mean, you came all this way.
Hi, my name's Judith Bergstrom. I'm a retired nurse, and I love where I live. We wouldn't have moved and moved out of Hidden Valley and purchased a place if it didn't have CCNRs that would give us some protection. It's really hard to have loud music going past when you're 1.7 miles up off of the road, up off the highway. You have all this noise. You have all the traffic going by, all the U-Haul trailers hauling their weed in and out. I have nothing against cannabis. I just feel that maybe they should grow it someplace that doesn't have CCNRs. And, you know, let us live our peaceful life with our chickens and dogs and cats and whatever. You know, it just totally makes sense to, I mean, the wind comes up. Last week, it was 47 miles an hour. It takes those greenhouses. It takes their Visqueen, blows it all over the place. You know, it's just, it's not a sustainable thing that they're doing. It just is ruining the landscape. You've got garbage strewn, beer bottles, all that crap all the way up and down the road. We go up and down. We clean it. But here they come. So, perhaps you can help us with this? We have many, many, many greenhouses, not just this one project. So, please save our little ranch out there. Thank you.
Thank you. If nobody else wishes, oh, we got one more. Okay.
I would just like to take this quick opportunity to remind the Zoom participants that have dialed in via phone that you could raise your hand by dialing star nine. And those who have joined just via Zoom client, you can raise your hand by clicking the button at the bottom of the screen. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Workman. I'm a resident at the Double Eagle. And like Walter said, we lived through the rocky fire of 2015. It was totally devastating. And I want to just second everything that everybody's already put on the table. They did a really good job. I really respect you guys hearing out the CCNRs of the Durpoa. It's really important that when a place is privatized and has rules set in place, that we try to uphold them. I am an animal science major, and I specialize in rangeland management. I have a small homestead that's off the grid. And not sustainable is an understatement about the large and illicit cannabis grows that happen around me. And I just hope that you guys really do take into consideration what they're saying is that a continuation is really not necessary. Satir has done a really wonderful job of doing the report. I've read it. I've spoken with her. And I think the only thing that was really underassessed was the fire evacuation routes. And it's really important, like Walter said, his house burned down. And the only reason mine next door didn't burn down was because I have a whole lot of livestock. So, the fire was able to be fended off. But like he said, there's very little water, and sucking water out of the water table for cannabis is pretty unreasonable. And I don't know, I don't really have anything else to add, but everything else was really, really well put by everyone else here. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I think we got almost everybody. Okay, no raised hands in the Zoom room, Jake?
Correct, there are currently no raised hands in Zoom.
Okay, and I believe everybody has spoke in here. So, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And I will bring it back to my, to the commission.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Hess.
I have a question for Scott, if he's still in the room. I can't see that. I don't have a full range of view there.
He's here, yeah.
Scott, I'm curious about the reason for the continuance as stated by the applicant. If the staff and planning commission or planning department decision is firm vis a vis the CCNRs, and it doesn't appear any meaningful interaction is occurring between the community and the applicant, what is the point of a continuance?
Well, Commissioner Hess, I was looking through my emails here trying to find, trying to find their request. And it was, because I would actually prefer to read it to you.
Sure.
So, I will read this to you. Satur has it printed. "I would like to formally request my project UP 19-46, Frosty Oaks, be postponed from the Planning Commission meeting on May 13. My team and I have read through your staff report and understand the position that the project is in. We would like to have our project's PC hearing rescheduled for June 10, June 10, 2021 PC hearing. These 30 days will allow us to reach out to Double Eagle Ranch to resolve the situation with them. Then, they ask to please confirm receipt of this email, and we greatly appreciate your assistance in the matter."
Thank you, Scott. Madam Chair, this is a first-time experience for the Planning Commission.
Is it? Okay, because I was thinking like, okay, well, no, what?
With respect to a cannabis application, I mean.
Right.
This simply hasn't occurred before, that staff has made a considered judgment and is proposing denial. And I appreciate the thought and hard work that went into preparing this kind of a very different report for us.
Yeah.
I live in Hidden Valley Lake. I live with CCNRs too. And I informed myself and learned about them before deciding to purchase a home in Hidden Valley Lake. It comes with the territory. I can't, I have absolutely nothing against cannabis, cannabis use, or legal cannabis grows. But I can't imagine a commercial cannabis activity somewhere in Hidden Valley Lake any more than the residents of this area where they live, with their Durpoa. And it sounds a little late in the game for the applicant to suddenly, if based on what we've heard today anecdotally is true, to suddenly reach out to the community and perhaps make meaningful progress on an issue that seems pretty intractable. I'm prepared to not continue this matter. Thanks for hearing me out.
Absolutely, so.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just, just to make it clear on CCNRs, there's been a lot of reference to them. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody is on the same page as far as CCNRs versus the Planning Commission, or not versus, but as they imply in Planning Commission decisions. CCNRs are not in and of themselves determinative. They are not a rule that governs the Planning Commission. They are not a rule that governs land use as far as how the county regulates land use. They are, however, one piece of evidence amongst all of the evidence that is presented to you, much like the comments presented today, the comments put online, that you are to consider collectively in determining whether or not you as an individual planner, excuse me, individual commissioner, can make the findings in the report. So, the CCNRs in and of themselves do not dictate your actions today. The collection of evidence in front of you that has been presented is what will inform your decision today.
Right, and the findings in the staff report and all that.
Correct.
Excellent, okay.
Well, I would like to say I echo Commissioner Hess's thoughts there. I used Hidden Valley Community Beyond the Gates as another example. And I really believe, again, it's not just the CCNRs, even though I was taught that at four years old, that those were the most important things with land. But again, it's something where I have a group of people here, and I have not heard from the cannabis applicant. So, I factor that in as well. I don't think I've seen something where there's been pushback and then not a cannabis applicant to be here and to defend oneself. So, I am also ready to vote. And again, I do think it is a little bit odd that it's now last minute. The HOA or the association there has stated that they don't intend to change their mind. So, I think that makes me feel like any decision I make has been thoroughly thought out. And I think we've gotten a lot of different evidence, and I'm ready to definitely weigh that. And I appreciate staff's time, and I appreciate the residents there at Double Eagle.
Commissioner Williams, if I could just add to that, I'm not defending the applicant, but perhaps the applicant was under the impression that your commission was going to approve the continuance. We advised him yesterday via email that we were going to be recommending a continuance to the item. So, there was no promises made. It was simply, we, that was going to be our recommendation. So, perhaps they felt that 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 was going to occur, and there was going to be no need for them to participate this morning.
Yes, and I do appreciate you bringing that and clarifying that point. I also know at the last meeting that they stayed, some of the group here stayed because they wanted to really see that there was nothing there. Now, if this was, again, if I put myself in his shoes, if it was my project, I would not, I mean, I would just, I would still just double-check. And so, I do appreciate the clarification there. And I will never know, but I do see every other fact in front of me, to me, is, you know, put me in a situation to really consider all the facts. And I would vote, I'm ready to vote at any point in time.
You can make a motion. I can't. Sorry. If you don't have any further comments, or Commissioner Hess, you've said what you needed to say, correct?
Yes, except for, it sounds like there are a lot of illicit grows in the area or on property within the HOA. And of course, we have no law enforcement authority here. But if there is concern about grows in addition to the application before us here today, obviously, that should be brought to the attention of the sheriff's office.
Yes. We're getting some head nods in the chambers. So, thank you for bringing that up, John.
Thanks, yeah. Thank you for being my eye. Thank you for reading my eyes and ears.
Again, I'm ready to make a motion. I was looking at our sample motions, and I wasn't really quite sure about that. I was looking at A and B and then the rest. Should I just start off by reading A? I make a motion to deny the mitigated negative declaration of IS 1965 for a major use permit UP 19-46.
Lance, I hate to, I hate to interrupt, but Scott, Nicole, do we need to add an additional motion to deny the request to continue? And does that have to take, do we, do we lead with that? I apologize for interrupting, Lance.
Commissioner, as far as I'm aware, and correct me if I'm wrong if I misheard, but there was not a motion to continue. There was a request.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. We did not, um, I wanted just to move forward as much as we could. And I'm glad that we went through it. And we will continue with.
So since there is no motion.
There was no motion.
On the floor for continuance, then it need not be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for putting up with that interruption, Lance.
Oh, no, thank you. I was hoping that you would put the. Yeah, okay. So I will start off again by putting another motion out there. I make a, a motion. I move the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-46 applied for by Frosty Oaks LLC Stewart Spivek on property located at 1027 Water Trough Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California, further described as APNs 628-100-10, 628-080-04, and 628-090-03 cannot be adopted if the use permit is denied per staff's recommendation in the staff report dated May 13th, 2021.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-46 applied for by Frosty Oaks LLC Stewart Spivek on property located at 1027 Water Trough Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California, further described as APNs 628-100-10, 628-080-04, and 628-090-03 does not meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27. Section one at, um, I would say, um, is that one or two? Or is that, yeah?
I had to say I, I, I.
I and II of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be denied subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 13th, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is any, excuse me, if there is a disagreement with the planning commission and appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving on to office or untimed staff update and office news.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to share in light of the time. Uh, I believe you all are aware that Takara has announced her resignation and is moving on. And we're certainly saddened to lose her not only for her extraordinary work and, and skills and the things that she brought to the department, but, but also as a friend. So she, she will be missed, but excited for her as she moves on to the next chapter. She's already, uh, she's moving on to Redding. And she's going to be taking on a, a great position up there. And our loss and, and the city of Redding's gain. So I'm very proud of her. And, and, uh, again, certainly a loss for the department. So we're adding some staff. We, we have an associate planner that's coming on towards the end of the month, and then a senior planner hopefully shortly after that. So we're, we're adding more folks to the mix, which we're grateful for. And just trying to get projects out as, as quickly and as efficiently as we can. As you are all aware, there's lots of things going on. Certainly lots to do in the cannabis industry. There's a lot of code enforcement action going on right now. And it's building season. So we're, we're fully staffed in both code enforcement and building.
That's good.
And we're very excited about that. We, in addition to the folks that we are anticipating, our planners, I guess, I guess I did have quite a bit to add here.
I'm like, you said it's going to be light. Okay.
We added a, a CDD technician who will be working in the cannabis area, um, doing project intake. And then we brought in a, um, office assistant who will be helping with the intake of, of non-cannabis applications. And we have a new accountant who we're very excited to have. So.
That's a lot.
Yeah. We're, we're, uh, again, pretty, pretty fully staffed in many of the, many of the divisions. Planning's still a little bit behind, and we're going to continue recruitment for that.
Okay. That's a, you, you wear a lot of hats, Scott.
Well, and I, I appreciate that. And, and, you know, I, I don't think it's a secret. Well, it's not a secret. It was put out in the newspaper and, and, uh, you know, that, that the boards decided to go a different direction and, and they're going to start recruitment for a new director. So I am back to interim status again and, um, happy to, happy to fulfill that role for as long as I need to. And working with the staff and, and trying to get projects out. And it's certainly been an honor for me to, to take on that challenge and pretty proud of, of a lot of the things that we've done and, and the changes that we've made in the department. And, uh, yeah, look, look forward to.
So anything exciting coming down the pipeline that we, that we can talk about?
Oh, gosh.
Project-wise. No?
No.
It's okay. Just tell me no. I hate the word. You can tell me no.
From a public works perspective, I, I submitted a grant for, through admin, submitted a grant for $2.2 million for some pavement rehab projects and.
That's exciting.
And it got, it made, made it past the first hurdle. And, and so, yes, there's some, some future projects on the horizon.
All right. All right. Anything else to add? Nicole, you have anything to say?
No. Thank you.
Well, I think we're going, oh, I can't make a motion to adjourn it, can I? No. No. I just want lunch.
I can.
Oh, you can? Hi, John.
I move that the May 13, 2021 planning commission meeting be adjourned.
Second.
Thanks. Good to see you, John. Thank you for everything today.
Oh, I'll be back in person next time. Thanks a lot, you guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks, Nicole.